In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Town of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you have completed your testimony. Thank you. And roll call.
Anthony Caldwell. Laura Grauman asked to be excused. Bruce McCracken.
Here.
Alan Rich is ill this evening. Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Robert Shepherd. Joel Reese asked to be excused. Cheryl Bethia.
Here.
Richard Prokanic.
Here.
What happened?
Mine was off.
Oh. Robert Shepherd.
Here.
Thank you. Cheryl Bethia.
Here.
Richard Prokanic.
Here.
Kunal Lakir.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here. Moving to what's remaining of our reorganization, Board Attorney interviews and appointment of Board Attorney. We have a representative of the firm that applied to represent us, and I would like you to introduce yourself and give us a quick summary of everything, and then we'll move forward from there.
My name is Daniel Legana from the law firm of Dakota Fitzpatrick Cole and Giblin. I have been practicing in land use now for several years. I represent multiple townships, and there are zoning boards and planning boards. I have, of course, several hundred matters and also represent private clients, and happy to be here and look forward to a great year and take a F.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Legana, there are a number of people that appear in your letter besides yourself. There's Mr. King, and there's Mr. Regan. And how is this going to work? Are you going to be the person who shows up every time for our meetings, or are these people going to be showing on a rotating basis?
I will be here for all the meetings.
Okay, good. Now, you have to speak into the microphone a little bit better. So if you're not going to be here, you'll be the one that makes sure that someone else comes?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Other questions?
I have a question. You represent some other boards. Is there any conflicts with that, with the evening hours or something?
No, as of now, the other boards that I represent do not meet on the Thursday evening, so it should not have any conflicts.
Okay.
Anyone? There are no further questions than or comments, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint as the attorney for the Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment, Mr. Legana from the firm of Dakota Fitzpatrick.
I'll second.
Anthony Caldwell.
Yes.
Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd.
Yes.
Cheryl Bethia.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic.
Yes.
Kunal Lakir.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Thank you.
Do we need to do this now, or?
No, you can do it later.
Next on the agenda with the minutes of the regular meeting, January 16th, 2020, that should be a quick.
Move the minutes? Second.
Anthony Caldwell.
Yes.
Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd.
Yes.
Cheryl Bethia.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Moving down to hearings, Ervam Patel, ZBA 190024, applicant is seeking a C variance to construct a single-family home, 441 Skilman Lane, Somerset, block 57.01, lot 24.02 in agricultural zone. This is carried to March 5th with no further notification. If you're here for that application, it will be March 5th. The first one we will hear, Calvary Baptist Church, ZBA 190005, site plan with use variance in which the applicant is proposing to construct in addition to the rear portion of the building and expand the existing onsite parking at 5 Franklin Street, Somerset, block 71, lots 1.01 and 2 in the R10 zone. This was carried from January 16th with no further notification needed. Before we begin that, should we swear or mark him as a witness for the year? And he may have testimony relevant, and we don't need to do it later.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And for the record, AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners and Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey.
Remember, that's good for the whole year.
Unless I somehow lose my license and certification, it's good.
That's true. We didn't ask if he had it. Okay. Mr. Linus is representing the church.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Is this on? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Adjustment, members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linus. My offices are at 21 Clyde Road here in Somerset, New Jersey, and I'm pleased to represent the Calvary Baptist Church this evening. By way of background, this church was originally constructed approximately 1855, and we appeared before this board in 1992, at which time the board adopted a resolution acknowledging the church as a pre-existing non-conforming use and granted a number of approvals. At that time in 1992, for those of you who remember, and my memory goes shorter every day, although I was here, there was an alteration for the church for classroom use, there were site changes to provide onsite parking, there was a lot area variance, size of parking stall variance, variance for planting screen between the parking area and residential dwellings, there was a variance for a 24-foot wide parking aisle, and a variance to allow 15 parking spaces, and there were variances for side yard, rear yard setback required for accessory buildings. So we were here in 1992, which is about 28 years ago, and we're appearing here tonight. And we're here tonight to hopefully construct in addition to the rear portion of the building with a basement addition. In addition, we want to expand the existing onsite parking, in essence, reorganize the parking lot to create a total of 32 spaces, not 15, 32 spaces in two separate parking areas. So the type of relief that we need, we need preliminary and final site plan approval, and we need conditional use variance approvals for a number of deviations from your standards. Now, before we got here tonight, we appeared before the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, and we had to do that because we're in a historic zone. We appeared in three occasions. It was heavily attended by members of the public, the commission, we worked with the commission, and the members of the public to revise the plans to the point where the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission has notified us that the plans that we've presented to them as ultimately revised are acceptable to the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission. And those are the plans that you'll be reviewing tonight in conjunction with this application. By way of something of a legal background, this is not a prohibited use, so this is not strictly, we're coming before you for a use variance for a use that's not permitted. Houses of worship are permitted conditional uses in your R10 zone, and that's where this property is, in your R10 zone. And generally, conditional uses are permitted in the zone district, but not every location within that district. Church was built in 1855, as I told you, and in 1992 was recognized as a pre-existing non-conforming use by this board. Now, the standards for conditional use variance, when you're looking for a conditional use variance, it's because the applicant is unable to comply with some of the ordinance conditions, and they need not materially affect the appropriateness of the site for the conditional uses. In addition, a church has been held to be an inherently beneficial use. So what does that mean? That means that the applicant's burden of proof for variances is significantly lessened. Not only does an inherently beneficial use presumptively satisfy the positive criteria, but the satisfaction of the negative criteria doesn't depend on an enhanced quality of proof. And you'll hear that from our planner, who will provide testimony. And ultimately, and according to Mr. Healy's report, which we go along with, you're going to have to balance the positives and the negatives and do a balancing act and see whether there's a net benefit arising out of this application. Layering on top of that is something called RALUPA. RALUPA, what is that? That's the Religious Land Use Institutional Protection Act, and it's a federal piece of legislation. And basically, the intent of RALUPA and the actual wording of RALUPA is that a town or a municipality or a board cannot impose an undue burden on a house of worship to the point where it interferes with the free exercise of religion. Basically, what we're going to be relying on for legal precedent is RALUPA, we're going to be relying on the House of Fire Christian Church, and I put this in our application package, and also Coventry Square, Inc. versus Westwood Zoning Board of Adjustment. Now, by way of witnesses tonight, I have four witnesses. I have Dwayne Muller, he'll be our first witness, he's the church administrator, and he'll tell you why we're here. And then I have Brian Taylor, the architect, who's gone with us before the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission and has the plans here tonight that were ultimately approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. Then I have Steve Parker. Steve's going to wear two hats. He is a licensed professional engineer and a licensed professional planner, so you'll hear testimony as to the site plan. He's going to put on his professional engineering hat, and then he's going to take that off and put on his professional planner's hat, and he'll give you the planning testimony in support of the application. And then we have Elizabeth Dolan from Dolan &amp; Dean, and she's our traffic consultant. In addition to those four witnesses, in case anybody has any questions, we have Pastor Bobby, who's the pastor of the church. I don't intend to call him as a witness, but if somebody has any questions, he'd certainly be able to answer them, because he was here with me in 1992 when I was a younger fellow. Okay. So without further ado, I'd like to go back to the seat and call up Dwayne Muller, my first witness. Got to talk into the microphone. Okay, Dwayne, what is your relationship to the church?
Okay, we need to swear a little bit. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your address, please.
Dwayne Muller, M-U-L-L-E-R. I live in 5 Rolling Hills Drive in Somerset.
Okay, Dwayne, what is your relationship to the church?
Member, and for 25 years, and church administrator.
Okay, and you're obviously familiar with the project that we're presenting to the board tonight, is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay, why are we here?
Well, our project involves changes to both the site as well as replacing an existing structure with one that is more functional for our needs. There are three main reasons, I'll just summarize them here, talk about them in more detail in a little bit. Those three reasons have to do with the site or the parking, and with that, we want to reorganize, well, actually, site parking, fellowship hall, and classrooms. The site parking is we want to reorganize our parking by making our existing space more functional, organized, and accessible, convenient, and safer. The net effect would be to increase onsite parking, although, given our space restrictions, that would be limited. Also regarding the fellowship hall, we want to make our fellowship hall more functional, we have an existing one, and provide a design that will accommodate more and existing people who already attend on Sunday morning and want to remain after service for lunch. I'll talk about that in a little bit. The fellowship hall is where we have lunch served.
Is the fellowship hall, is that located, sort of attached to the back of the church?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I just want to get my bearings here. All right.
Thank you. And then there's classrooms, and the classrooms have a threefold purpose for those. We want to move, currently, our classrooms meet in the basement of our main auditorium or sanctuary, and we want to move those, children's classrooms and nursery, out of the basement. It's not a very appealing location, there are no windows, it's dark, depending on the weather, it can also be somewhat damp. We also want more functional rooms as needed for adult Bible studies, and we also want some additional rooms to enable us to potentially offer a wider variety of adult Sunday school classes. Currently, we can only offer one main class with maybe one other small one. Our space to be able to offer other biblical educational classes is very limited.
All right, you want to describe the project a little further there, Dwayne?
Okay, so we'll take each of these category by category. So the first one has to do with the site or the parking. Our existing lot contains largely unfinished stone lot, there are some paved, and it's very, and also has very inadequate lighting. It poses unsafe conditions at night and, of course, in difficult weather. Although our neighbors have been very gracious when we park on the road, sometimes an available space is quite far down. This becomes difficult, especially for families with special needs, such as babies, small children, or for people carrying a significant load, and it also may be unsafe for older folks. When it snows, parking on the road is limited to one side, so emergency vehicles can get through, and when it snows considerably, that is. Also, we have part of our lot, or probably the majority of our lot, is a stoned lot. We would like to see that paved, as for safety for older folks who it's difficult to get around on a stone lot. Some of our folks have canes or walkers. We also have a section of grass in the back, it's not visible to the road. We would also like to utilize that for parking and provide additional spaces that are more accessible, convenient, and safer. Well, that's with the site and the parking. The next section then is with the building or the structure. We do currently have a fellowship hall, as we said, that's attached to the back of our main sanctuary area. That was built at a later time than the main area, and so we would like to actually fully tear that section down. It's a one-story fellowship hall. It's, again, attached to the rear of the main church building. We want to replace it with a new structure that would consist of two stories and a basement. The new structure is proposed to have a slightly larger footprint than the original structure. Our architect will show you the sizes. The basement in the new structure, that was actually decided to be added, not initially, but because after the drawings were complete on the first floor of fellowship hall, which is where our new fellowship hall would be, because we also, in this new structure, had to include two stairwells, which we don't have any stairwells now, being only one floor, we had to include larger bathrooms to be ADA compliant. And the actual fellowship hall, then, the increased space of the actual fellowship hall, when all that was said and done, oh, also a larger kitchen had to be required due to some, bring it up to code.
Bring it up to code, correct?
Correct. And so after all those things were added on the first floor, we realized that the increased space for the actual fellowship hall would really be only minimal. And so as a result, we added a basement to the project, and that would be for a kind of fellowship hall overflow, and would also serve as a larger single gathering, really what we wanted on the first floor, but we couldn't with all the additional things.
What is the difference, what is the difference in the size between the current fellowship hall and the fellowship hall that is going to be created if this is approved?
That's a good question. I think our architect has that information.
All right, well, then we'll get, I'll ask him when he comes up. That's great. But I'm not done yet. What are you going to do with the space that's underneath the church, that's in the basement of the church?
Yes, I was going to address.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry.
I'm going to address that, so if you'd like to, when I get to that point.
Sure.
Okay, that would be good. Then, well, as a result, well, in regard to the basement of the new structure, we, that would serve as fellowship hall overflow, or it would serve as a larger, if we had to have a single gathering. However, there are also other uses as well. So we could summarize maybe the basement of the new structure, the intended purpose of that would be, I guess you could call it a multipurpose space. Examples of use would include, as I already said, fellowship hall overflow, a large classroom if we needed such a thing as that. It would also be used for youth activities or games. Currently, we use our existing fellowship hall for that at times, and when we do, we have some tables sitting there. We have to break those down to make the space, and then children can do, you know, have their activities there, but then when it's finished, we've got to put the tables back up. With the basement, we can just keep it open generally and keep a table set up on our first floor. It would also, could also be used, actually would also be used for storage, as well as, as I already mentioned, a larger event room if the first floor was proved not to be large enough for some event. So that's the things that we had considered for the basement of the new structure. And then, the new structure, we talked about having a second floor, that would include the classrooms. The classrooms would be located on the second floor. And the classrooms are intended for, the purpose of those would be intended for youth Sunday school classrooms, potentially a mother's room, children's nursery, for younger children only during times when we have church activities or church service or other church-related activities, such as Bible studies, for instance, during which a participating parent needs childcare. So it would not be such a thing, that we wouldn't have like a daycare there, okay, just to make that clear.
You're not proposing any daycare facility or a childcare facility, what is commonly known as a childcare facility? Strictly for use of the church, the mothers and?
Correct.
Well, it would be sort of daycare when, when the church was going on.
That's correct.
Right, right. And while we're on that, what are the church services, just so we can put that on the record? Sundays?
Currently, there, Sunday, we have Sunday school at 9:30, and then following that, there's some time for food in the back, and then there's the service, which starts at 11 o'clock, maybe goes to around 12:30. First Sunday of every month, we have a lunch that would follow after a service, maybe that would go for a few hours, a couple hours. And we also, second, third Sundays, we have a home group currently that meets, happens to meet at homes, but also in church.
Excuse me, a home group?
Yeah, we call it home groups, but one of them meets actually, well, some of them because they meet in homes, but we actually have one that meets at the church for people where there's not a home group in their area, and so they can stay for one at church.
Do you serve a hot lunch? Here, over here. Do you serve a hot lunch? We'll keep you guessing.
Yes, it, hot lunch, and usually it would be something like, it's maybe catered, so there's the, you know, they have the.
Use the ovens and stuff like that?
Microwaves to reheat things that would come. Currently, we don't have a situation where we have for stove cooking. Okay, so, okay, so for the classrooms, then, the classrooms basically then would, the purpose is to really replace the current classrooms, because these, we're seeking to move the children and these things that are currently in our basement of our main auditorium or sanctuary, to move those things to the second floor.
Wait, you did, that's the second time you referred, you said the auditorium or the sanctuary?
Same thing, interchange.
Okay, so, so it's, in my language, you're talking about the basement of the church?
The main church building.
Okay.
That's correct. Okay, so, also currently on Friday nights, we have what's called Family Night, and so we have some, we have a prayer meeting, we have Bible studies, teen activities, children activities. And so it's possible that one or more of those classrooms may be used for the teen Bible study or an adult Bible study as well.
All right, so other than the Sunday services that you've spoken about, as well as the Friday nights, is there any other activity at the church?
Two Wednesdays a month, we have a prayer meeting that's on Wednesday, and on, there's, when we don't have Family Night, there's young adult ministry that meets on Friday night. I mean, but that doesn't mean that in the future, you know, a couple of years down the road, that we might not have something else on a Tuesday night, but currently, we have nothing like that.
Now, why do you think you need a larger fellowship hall?
Okay, so, we regularly serve lunch, as I had mentioned, on the first Sunday of every month, after the service. And so in our current configuration with the existing fellowship hall, some people present at our morning service may have to leave after the service and not stay for the meal for this reason, because our current fellowship hall is really too small to fit everyone for lunch who attends the morning service.
So your regular members who attend the morning service, some of them leave because there's not enough room?
Yeah, I mean, some of them.
But they're there already.
For other reasons, but yeah, but they may very well stay, except, you know, if it's hot, it gets pretty hot back there, and it could be very crowded at certain times.
Excuse me, question. You may have mentioned it, how many members at the church currently?
Currently, current membership is actually, just January 2020, is 101.
And has that been stable over the last few years?
It has. As a matter of fact, the last three years, because I just went back, looked at the last three years of membership, it only actually changed by, the lowest one was 100, the highest was last year at 102. Four years ago was 101 as well. We have had new people come, but those also have been offset by people who've left. So overall, it's been the same, stable for the last few.
Question over here, just 101, is that members or membership families?
Actually, that's, no, we have about, I don't have that number here, but it's about 60-something member units. Which was maybe 58, some 50.
Sometimes places of worship refer to members as, you know, they refer to it as a family unit as opposed to an individual, so it's 100, approximately 101 individuals.
Individual members, that would be adults.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
And then, and then, I guess, people under 18, or they're not counted, because they're not really members?
Well, we have a couple people, if they've gone through a membership class, they would have to go through a membership class. Usually, maybe there's some older teens that have rare, it's not too many, but we have some.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I believe I was answering the question about our, why we want a larger fellowship hall, because after our service, first Sunday of every month, we, again, we have a lunch, and some of our people may very well leave because they, who are already there for service, because there's not enough room in the fellowship hall in the back to be able to stay for lunch. So just to give you an idea, our current fellowship hall, yeah, seats only about 25% capacity of our main, which would be, yeah, the capacity of our main auditorium or sanctuary. So people who would come and sit for church service in the pews, if, however many fits in there, in the back, it only fits about 25% of that. Now, of course, we don't have a packed, you know, 100% filled, you know, service, so with the people who do come, I would probably estimate that about, the fellowship hall could probably fit about 50% of those who would come on a normal basis, maybe a little bit less. So that means 50% are leaving, and they can't stay if they wanted to stay. So that certainly is one of the main reasons why we wanted to have a larger fellowship hall.
Okay, let's talk about the existing main building. Does this application involve any renovation or increase in the seating capacity of the main auditorium or the sanctuary?
No, it does not.
And will the classrooms in the basement of the main auditorium remain as is?
We have no plans to make any changes down there at this time.
I have a question over here. You said you have no plans for changes, but I thought the plan was to move those up to the second floor?
Right, oh, okay, so, yes, those, there's classrooms in the basement, which, on Sunday morning, we have children's Sunday school that meets down there, and there's a nursery and a mother's room for feeding babies. So the idea is that those would be replaced in terms of their purpose, and the children and everyone who meets down there for those purposes would then, it would be transferred up to the second floor classrooms.
So you're just relocating it, but same function?
Correct. So, and I believe it's the same number of classrooms, actually, that are being built that are down there. So, so those were. So, so those would all be empty. That's not to say that we wouldn't use them in the future for something if we had a need to do so. I had mentioned earlier that there might be, we don't have a lot of room for adult Sunday school classes. So they currently, the bulk of it meets upstairs in the sanctuary area. So if we wanted to have a variety of Sunday school classes, for instance, like maybe a marriage class or a parenting class or some other class, then we could then utilize the basement for, you know, for that, because those would be open now.
All right, are the church facilities intended only for church-related events?
Yes, it is.
And what are, and what do you mean by church-related events?
We don't rent the church, actually, it's a church policy that we do not rent the facilities out to people who are not church members or who are affiliated with our church. And so church-related events would include such things as, of course, Sunday morning service or Sunday school. I already mentioned some of these, weekly Bible studies, prayer meetings, weddings. We could have a wedding, maybe that would be zero to two, let's say, a year. Last year, I think we had two. Funerals, we haven't had one of those in quite a while, we thank the Lord for that. A bridal or baby shower. And also just to state that out of all those services or those functions, that the Sunday service, Sunday morning service would be the largest of those events. All other events anticipated would be, would be smaller, producing, then of course, less traffic, needing less parking spaces.
Now, there was a question in one of the reports regarding access to the dumpster in the parking lot area. You want to address that?
Sure. So of course, as a church, we would have the parking would be filled on Sunday, but it would be very empty during the week. The things that I mentioned earlier about what we do at our church would be really more in the evening, but not in the daytime. So of course, garbage pickup is sometime during the week, during the daytime. So at that point, there would probably be only a couple cars, you know, at most in the parking lot. Of course, those spots could remain empty.
So you don't see that it would block any access to a garbage truck because of the differential in hours and the non-use of the property?
Correct.
Now, there was a question by Mr. Healy regarding the existing sign near the corner of Franklin Street and Amwell Road and whether they ever received some approvals? Do you recall that?
Yes. Sure.
First exhibit, and I've marked it as A1.
Yeah, actually, before you get to that one.
You want to identify it?
Have these handed out?
I'm going to hand it out.
Okay, yes. So first of all, actually, Calvary Baptist Church purchased the building in nineteen seventy-five and placed a sign on Amwell close to that time. So that was about forty-five years ago. Pastor Bobby, he started at church here in nineteen eighty-five. He's the person who has been here the longest so far.
Sure, Frank.
And the picture that you see or that's being handed out now is a picture of the sign that went up back in nineteen seventy-five of Calvary Baptist Church. Okay, now, that original sign, it was destroyed by a bad storm in two thousand six when a tree fell on it. Okay, and at that time, Pastor Bobby met with the Historic Commission in the spring of two thousand six.
I'm going to show you what we've marked as exhibit A2, and they appear to be minutes of a meeting before the Historic Preservation Commission on May fourth, two thousand and six.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, so, yes, this shows the Calvary Baptist Church was on, right, on the agenda of the Historic Preservation Commission agenda on May fourth, two thousand six. And so Pastor attended that, that meeting. And at the time, at the time listing of that event. So the Historic Commission gave Pastor verbal approval of the new sign. He brought the sign plans and all that, the new sign plans. And they fit the Historic Commission's design to be acceptable for the area.
And I'm going to show you what I've marked as exhibit A3. You want to identify that and then I'll distribute it?
Yes, that's, this is the new sign that Pastor, well, obviously, it's a picture of the sign already there. But that's the, what Pastor brought, brought the plans in to show the sign which ended up going up. Now, the new sign was set up in two thousand six. And this was placed there in the same location as the original sign, which was there at that point for about thirty years. And now, at the time when this went up, I believe to answer the question that was addressed, Pastor did not know that a permit was also required from the board or from the township and considered that the Historic Commission's approval was sufficient. So we moved forward with this. And this was also, again, there were columns and pillars there with this to fit kind of the design of historic design.
All right, I'm going to show you what I've marked as A4, and would you tell the board what is A4?
Okay, so, yes, so this is, there's a new sign that went up in two thousand seventeen. So again, the original sign, I mean, excuse me, the second sign was two thousand six. And then in two thousand seventeen, our church, we changed the name from Calvary Baptist Church, doing business as DBA Calvary Community Church. And so we replaced the sign face on the existing columns. So we did not, we didn't change the columns at all. They remained the same. All we did was remove the sign that was between the columns and we put up a new sign. Now, these pictures that you're receiving are in black and white. But I suppose if they were in color, you would see that this new sign, I think all would agree, particularly our neighbors, I'm sure would agree, that the new sign is a much more fitting sign for, for East Millstone rather than the previous sign that we had. The previous sign we had was a bright blue, had some yellow and some red on it. And didn't quite fit historic colors there. But this one here is a much more historic-looking sign. It also has a, an arrow that identifies East Millstone. Actually, for all the passersby's seeing that that in fact is East Millstone, because if you go down Amwell and blink a few times, you might miss it. And so that sign there, again, just has been replaced. And again, the columns were not changed at all.
Was this sign approved?
This sign was, I, I, I'm not aware of this sign being, anything being changed. It was just the face of the sign, not the, I'm not aware.
So there was no change in the structure itself, just the face of the sign? Is that what you're saying? And what appears on the sign? Now it's Calvary Community Church?
Yes, it, yes, it's the same information really as we had before, except it just with the new church name.
And the location of the sign is on the site plan?
The location of the sign is on, and it, correct. And actually, there's, this picture, I believe, also demonstrates that...
You're referring to A4?
Yes, or maybe it was another picture. But it, as you're, it does not block the site, just when you're, when you pull up in a car. We're actually behind a stop sign at this point, and you can see all the way down the road. The sign does not block it, actually, there's vegetation that blocks it before the sign would ever block it.
All right, now, now we're going to get into parking. Historically, there's been an issue with respect to number of parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
All right, and we'll hear from Betsy Dolan on site circulation and parking. We'll also hear from Steve Parker on the site plan relating to parking. Did you ever consider or investigate any alternatives to the parking situation going off-site?
We did investigate one and we considered a second one. Actually, there was technically even a third. But the, we did actually approach a neighbor across the street concerning a grass lot that he had. We were anticipating, or we were asking about purchasing that. The neighbor did, did not want to part with that separate from his other parts of his land. So he wanted, if he sold anything, it would be everything. But when we added all that up, it was, it was unreasonable or unfeasible. It was not feasible for us in terms of the expense to be able to purchase his whole property.
Was this onca?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Oh, and then the other location would be across Amwell, which would be where the firehouse is. But we did not actually go over and speak with them. We kind of dismissed that with this reasoning that, number one, Amwell is a quite a different road than Franklin Street. Franklin Street's very easy to cross, Amwell's a very busy road. In addition, the parking lot at the firehouse is not right in front of the church parsonage, but instead it's down a little ways. And there are no sidewalks on Amwell. And so people would either have to walk in the street or on the grass. And in addition, we would have to employ some sort of safety patrol. And we thought that, you know, we just dismissed that as, thought it would just be better. We'd try to facilitate it at our own location.
All right, and finally, in your opinion, if this board were to approve the improvements proposed by the site plan, do you believe your members can more fully and adequately practice the religious activities that occur onsite?
Yes, no.
No further questions?
I have one question, Frank. In the, in the package, I don't see any correspondence from either John House or the fire department. So I presume that you talked to him about, about this whole project?
Steve? All right, Steve's our engineer.
I believe that if you look in the, the package, John House said, no objection.
Yeah, I see that, but I don't see...
So he had no objection, didn't send in the report, I guess.
Okay, I don't see the correspondence.
Right, right, for the record, we did receive a report, as indicated by Mr. Shepherd, dated January second, two thousand and twenty, from John House, the Director of Fire Prevention. Fire Prevention has no objections to the revised application. And I can tell you this, knowing John House, if he had objections, you'd know about it, and we know about it.
In terms of the, of the parking in the cars, you're at fifteen spaces now, right? And you're going to go, you want to go to thirty-two, I guess it is? Do you, based on the fact, on a, on a normal day, let's say, you're not at a hundred percent capacity within the church, how, how do you foresee thirty-two spaces? How well do you foresee it handling the cars that would normally be there on a normal, I guess, Sunday, right?
We would still need to access the street as we currently do. The idea with the parking now is it would be more organized. That the stone lots would be paved, so they would be safer. And we would be able to fully, more fully utilize the portion, some portions that are on our property that are not being utilized for that purpose. And so I think that having, going through with the, with the additions, again, would make it a much more organized and probably a much safer environment than what we exist, what currently exists right now.
That's always desirable, but you are doubling the capacity, yes? And you're not, I mean, how many, on a normal Sunday, how many people are in the sanctuary on average?
So, so there's a hundred, I said a hundred and one members now, of course, not everyone comes every week. So I would estimate, actually, there is, because we also have additional people who come that are not members. We would just call them regular attenders. But it actually would be in line to say that we probably have about a hundred, sometimes a little bit less, maybe a little bit more.
Okay, so I understand now that the volume will make it better, but it's not seriously addressing a solution to a parking problem.
In light of the site constraints, you can't, you can't fully address the problem onsite. It's true. But, but speaking about that, the need for the additional parking spaces onsite, as I take it, is that for members who may be handicapped or have elderly people?
Yes, I had mentioned earlier that we could just call them in general special needs, you know, families that have babies. It would be easier just to have a closer parking spot rather than having to walk several houses down from the road or...
Because that's what they're doing now, right? That's what they've done for...
Unless they're one of the first, you know, people who get there and park somewhere, of course.
You're finished?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a few, just a follow-up on the parking. So with a hundred members and you said about sixty families, and this is really just a related follow-up question. How many cars do you observe parking onsite? And how many cars do you observe parking on the street on a typical basis, on a typical Sunday?
I will tell you that I, I'm inside during the time. So I actually haven't gone outside myself and counted the vehicles that are there, either on the lot or down the street. So I can't say myself personally that I have made that count, nor have I, am I aware of someone within our church who've done that.
All right, and regarding the sign, I mean, this is really maybe more of a technical issue. But so this, the sign was put there, the original sign in exhibit A1 sometime in the, forty-five years ago. And then in two thousand six, it was replaced in the same location. And then in, more recently, it looks like it was refaced. So it never got, as far as I know, any zoning approval. It went to Historic, but it never got any zoning approval because it would have required a number of variances. It looks like it's twenty-five square feet is the maximum size that's permitted. I don't know the height. Looks like it's close to ten feet is the maximum height. It looks, it's tough to say. And then the setback, required setback is twenty-five feet and certainly doesn't meet that. So what I'm suggesting to the board is, and I'm sure the applicant would agree...
We're amending our application to request the variance.
And you've noticed for any and all necessary variances that may arise during the hearing.
Yes.
So I think this is one of those where I think this is an application where variant, need for variance has popped up. Lastly, the, it's in a road widening easement. Do you know when that came about, or Frank, would you happen to know?
I think Steve Parker, our engineer, knows.
Okay.
We might as well swear Steve in now, because there were a couple of questions that...
The reason I raise that is, even if the board grants the variances, my understanding would be the purpose of that is to allow Somerset County to widen, to acquire that easement. And that may mean the sign goes bye-bye.
All right, you want to swear Steve in, please?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
Steve Parker, P-A-R-K-E-R, Somerville, New Jersey.
All right, Steve, you're a licensed PE and you're a licensed PP and you still have your licenses. And you were the...
The mic is on, you just have to talk into it. Put it up by your face, it's too low, we can't hear you. There you go.
All right, Steve...
Closer, closer, there you go.
Steve, you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and you're a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and you still hold your licenses, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, and you prepared...
We're okay with that.
Okay, you prepared the site plan, you can answer the question.
So the site, I mean, the widening easement has been in place actually since the nineteen ninety-two application. And I believe it was requested by Somerset County at the time, the county planning board. They haven't done anything with it, it's still there now, it still exists. This current application has also been submitted to the county for review. So we haven't received any comments regarding the sign from them about that. But certainly, if they want to widen the road in some way, it's going to have to move. It's basically they're, they're at your own risk.
Correct, in essence.
Okay. And do we happen, does anybody have an estimate of the size of the sign? Is it forty square feet, thirty-five? Well, why don't we get back to that? If somebody happens to have a figure, otherwise we'll have to figure it out for the resolution. I don't have that right here. Okay. All right, we can, we can get back to that. All right, thank you.
Okay, don't worry about it now.
Okay, I have a, I have a question. Mr. Linus asked you if the granting of this would have an effect upon your ability to... to practice your religion and to worship on the spot. My question is the opposite. If this is not granted, would this, the, the lack of the changes that you're requesting, would it have some sort of negative effect upon your parishioners to practice their religion at this site?
Well, there would be a negative effect.
What would that be?
Well, well, currently, as I had mentioned in there, that, for instance, our time of fellowship after our service, there are people who are unable to stay for our time for lunch. They currently may be leaving, and the anticipation is that they may be missing on some time of our gathering together. And so having a larger location for lunch would certainly be very beneficial for that. Without that, people are, are leaving. Also, we have, for instance, a men's Bible study that meets on Friday, I said family night. It meets in one location that we're bursting at the seam in that. There's 20 people, it can really hold only a maximum of 20 people in that, in the room. With the new building, we would have sufficient room for men to be able to come, to continue for that. And so it would, it would simply be that we're, we would be, over the years also, our attendance has, in past, past years, not in the last several years, as I mentioned, but we have had in the past fluctuating attendance where it has been more than what it is now. And so a, a larger areas of rooms for like Sunday School certainly would be helpful. It doesn't, would be actually important. Right now, in the, in the past, let's say, let's just say, I don't know right now, but let's say it was 10 or 15 years ago, our, we did have very crowded Sunday School rooms as well. And so having a larger, Sunday School rooms would also be very helpful if we were to have that opportunity in the future.
It might be if the, if the congregation was to grow in that respect.
Correct.
Okay.
But even our existing, the way it is right now, as I said, for the one, the men's study in the back, or the women's study, there's, there's not enough room for us.
What, what is in the, the standalone building that's in the back?
Standalone building? Okay, that building is, the top floor contains the pastor's office. Their bottom floor contains, actually, my office as the church administrator. And there's also a small conference room, at least that's what we use it for. And, and actually, that's where it's, the room is too small that we meet for, you know, a men's Bible study can't hold more than.
Okay, okay.
All right, as a follow-up to Mr. Shepherd's question, as a potential negative impact if it's not approved, you did mention that with the site improvements, there would be more opportunity for a variety of religious exercises, religious experiences, a variety of classes.
Correct, we could offer more of a, of a variety of classes. Right now, we offer only a, a main Sunday School, and then we have a, one other smaller Sunday School. Having additional classrooms would give us the opportunity of having maybe additional alternative or a variety of adult Sunday School classes. Also, with children, we have, because of our, the small amount of Sunday School classrooms that we do have, we have to combine certain grade levels, a wider range of grade levels that maybe we would like to, if, you know, to be in one class, that if there were enough people, that it would be nice to be able to separate those out so that younger people or, or more with younger people, as opposed to having such a range, maybe like three or four class, I mean, uh, grade levels, you know, to have them spread out a little bit. And we could do that if we had more additional classrooms.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up on the classrooms. So when you say additional classrooms, you mean there, there would actually be more than what is there now?
So I, I believe the plans show that there's going to be the same amount.
Okay.
But it, our plan currently is to take what's in the basement and to move it up there. But again, then it would free up those bottom room, the rooms that are currently in the basement, that if we needed to have, spread things out further, or if we needed to have, there's one larger room down there that we could use, that we would have that as an option. Of course, we would, you know, we would use the classrooms on the second floor. First, if we needed in the future to have more space, you know, we wanted to split grades. And, and right, sometimes we do it if there's not a lot of people in a particular, young children in a particular grade, so we might combine them. But if there are a number of children, it could get too crowded if we can, and we, also, of course, the learning is better if we, if we split them up so they're more in their grade, their grade level. Then we would have, maybe we could put older kids down there as opposed to younger kids if we need.
Okay, so you're still talking about the same overall number? You're just saying being able to have more space to spread them out?
Correct.
Okay.
Some of the rooms are a little bit larger in the new, the new, the new building, propose, proposal building. And then again, the plan is to take what we have now and to move it up there. And if there's, if we have any desire for a variety of things, or if there is growth, then we would be able to utilize the rooms that would be empty in the basement.
Do you have a plan in case there would be some of these, some of these programs that are all being done on Sundays?
We have, well, Sunday School is on Sunday when everyone comes.
Correct, but when you talk about adding adults, adult Bible studies.
Some of that could be also, some of that also could be on Sunday, also on Friday is when we meet for that.
What is, what's your plan if some of these non-members that you were talking about before suddenly decide to be full-time memberships, members, and there is actually some growth involved here? What, what, it kind of sounds like you're maxed out. And that's why you're here, obviously, for more efficient use of the space, but also for more space. But what's gonna happen if there were 25 more families? Or, or members?
You mean, if, if we do nothing, do you mean, or?
Right, no, I mean, even if you do, what, the parking is an issue. The parking, I think, is, is, is the main issue during the main Sunday service, where everybody's in the sanctuary for the most part. Is there any consideration, I'm throwing this out for discussion, I don't, I'm not an expert in this, but can you, any thought of two services where you can split the crowd and therefore split the parking need? All I'm getting at is maybe some flexible.
Correct.
Is there any discussion of some, of the potential for some flexible scheduling to alleviate? I can't see you staying the same membership for the next 10 years and, and our space limited.
Okay, so we wouldn't see a need for two services, as you mentioned, unless our actual morning service was, you know, we looked around and said like, we don't know where we're gonna put another person. It's not at that point, if you were to come on a Sunday morning, there's plenty of, of room for people to be able to sit at this point. In the past, we have had that happen. As I had mentioned, it's been quite a bit in the past, where we actually was trying, were trying, trying to try to figure out what are we gonna do if another family walks through the door. That isn't the way it is right now, it doesn't mean that that won't happen again in the future. And so if something like that were to happen, we would obviously have to talk about what we would do. And many churches would go to maybe two services, and that's certainly that we would have to consider. But we've never had to actually do that, at least in the 25 years that I've been there.
So what you're saying is that should the need arise, you're open to the idea of adjusting your schedule to, to better, to create a better flow outside or enough seats inside?
Correct.
And you're not, I think if, if I'm correct, your testimony is that in, in general, your application is to more efficiently accommodate what you're doing, more than it is to attract more people or more programs?
Correct, at this, I, I can't see.
Accommodate what you're doing in a better, efficient way.
Uh, I, I believe that's correct, what, what you're saying, because at this point, of course, I don't think there'd be anyone that could say how many people are gonna be at Calvary a year from now or even a month from now. But of course, we would always welcome to have more people. But at this point, we are, are not bursting at the seams in our main sanctuary. And yet, I did describe a situation where our Friday night men's group, however, is in a situation where we actually don't have enough space for men who actually have come out on Friday night, and they couldn't actually all fit in the room. And so, and that's simply because we don't have, the women, for instance, meet in the main sanctuary area. And we have some children that, when they meet, sometimes they may meet in the fellowship hall area. And so there's not a lot of, there's really no other place. And so we try to fit in the back, in, in, in the back conference room, but that only holds very tightly, no more than 20. And, and we can't fit more right now for them.
Okay, and you've already, I think, testified, you're, you're not in no intention to establish a, a regular daycare center. And obviously, you can't have a, you're not gonna have a room for a regular school or any of the other auxiliary uses that a church can have. Yours, you're, you're talking, we're talking here, activities related to worshipping and the church services and that, that are the services that the church provides, you know, not the auxiliary things that some places are.
That's correct, and we, and as I said, it, it is our church policy, we do not rent, no one can say, matter of fact, we have had people call and ask to rent the church for a wedding, and we, we tell them it's our, sorry, it's our policy, you have to be actually a member if you, you know, you can try to come to church and be a member, but, so we don't, we don't rent out to any of those things.
You want us to give you an excuse and make it stronger than a policy? And say it's a condition of your approval, there's no outside rentals, I don't think? Doesn't sound like you're interested in that, any, give you an excuse to tell people that it's not your fault, you'd love to, but. Any other questions? I think we should open to the public. Anyone out there who, this part of the, the hearing is limited to questions concerning the, the testimony of this witness. So if there's anyone out there who would like to ask this witness a question concerning the testimony that you heard, this would be the time to do it. Come forward to the podium. All have a chance to make a statement at the end. Different, different setting, okay, well. All right, come on up, we need your name and address.
Hi, Greg Gilfeather, 393 Canal Road, East Millstone, New Jersey. I don't have a comment for this gentleman, but this gentleman.
Well, he hasn't testified yet, so how about if we?
He did testify, it's sworn in.
This is his testimony. We're, we're limited to questions on his.
Just for this gentleman, we'll have a chance with the engineer in a minute.
You bet.
You'll have a chance to get, get that, yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, did, was he, did he have a question about his testimony about the sign? Because that was, or, or I'm sorry, about the road widening, he had.
We've got the engineer and Ms. Dolan for the parking.
We'll get to his testimony. Need your name and address.
Name is Patricia Love.
Close to the mic.
Patricia Love, L-O-V-E, 393 Canal Road, East Millstone. My question is, I know there's been talk about the back room only being able to support 25% of the number of people that the sanctuary holds. And, but there's also been a statement that the sanctuary is well below capacity at this time. So I would like to know what the sanctuary could hold, so we understand how many people actually can be housed or can be supported in that back room.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll say that, first start by saying it this way. It's maximum capacity in the, in the, in the, the church sanctuary auditorium area is kind of unrealistic, before I, I give the number. Only because the church, of course, was built in 1855. And the way that it works is there's, there's actually a bar down the middle of each of the pews. So in a normal setting today, you could go in and sit down, and then if someone else comes in, you could, they could just scoot down. But that's not the case here, because there's a, there's a wood bar there, so you can't actually scoot down. So in, in reality, even though maximum capacity would be actually over probably 200 people in terms of if everyone sat, you know, shoulder to shoulder. We have some chairs and some pews, so if everyone sat on all the chairs and then in the pews, shoulder to shoulder, which would be very hard to actually accommodate, given the way that the pews are set up. But if it was, it would be 200 and a little bit more than 200. And so the fellowship hall right now sits, we have about five round tables, five, six round tables, five round tables with eight chairs around them. Okay, so 40 plus there's some standalone, there's some stand-up tables that you don't sit down at. And so probably it would not hold more than 50 something without being very crowded.
And have you actually had conversation with some of the parishioners to the effect of, are, are you not staying for the lunch because there's not enough room for you? Or are you not staying because you're not hungry, for example?
I have not personally taken a survey on, on that. I, I do know that I've been in the back. Particularly, for instance, I'm considering in the summertime where it's, it's very, very hot back there. And even though we have a couple of ceiling fans, it's simply, it's very, very hot. So I know that people, it's very crowded, so people don't, I, I know that you couldn't fit another, you know, person, you know, back there. So I have seen that. We've also had a, actually, just this last Christmas, we've had a Christmas party gathering back there. And it, it was maximum capacity, so we couldn't fit anyone else. It was, we couldn't fit one more, really one more person.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Barbara Tenbrook, and I am the neighbor to the east of the church, and.
Ma'am, could we have your address?
Oh, 2346 Amwell Road. And my question is about the little building in the back that was a garage. And it became an office building. And I don't know if it's safe, and I don't know if any permits were ever taken out for that building. And is that building up to code? My question to you.
I can't answer that question, because when I came in 1995, the building already existed as it is. I don't know of any other changes that took place since I've been there.
Hey.
My name is Robin Scudder, I live at 43 Livingston Avenue in East Millstone. My question is, question and clarification. The last meetings where the historic advisory committee meetings, the need for moving upstairs seemed to highlight flooding in the basement. And I, and they were not gonna use that area because it flooded at times. I've not heard any concern about flooding, what I've heard is maybe some humidity. You're building those spaces because of discomfort down there with, with humidity. But now you're saying, if needed, you're gonna use that space essentially the same way you're saying you can't use it now. So I'm, that's not really clear to me.
Okay, let me explain, yes, flooding was of reference to, when, there were two major hurricanes that occurred, I can't think of their names right now. Yes, well, no, not the one that was that far back. Yes, well, no, not the one that was that far back. But there were two recent ones. One had more rain than wind, the other one had more wind than rain, and knocked out the power for a long time. But the one that had a lot of rain, that actually did flood our basement. It completely, basically, several feet up, was covered with water in the basement. And so, we actually, for a significant part of a year, were completely without a basement at that time. And so, all of our Sunday School classes down there had to be canceled. I think we somehow consolidated something, nursery in the back fellowship hall, and it was a kind of a mess during that, during that period of time. Since that time, we have gotten a generator, because I think we had lost some power there too. And we've also added an additional sump, an additional sump, I believe, as well as one or two more sump pumps. So we haven't had that flooding that we had when, I'm going to say, 10 to 15 years ago, whenever that hurricane was, that flooded everything, including probably the first aid area that was in East Millstone. So yes, flooding hasn't happened in, you know, to that extent since then. And that's primarily because we have a generator now and we have multiple sump pumps. But nevertheless, it still can be damp at times. We've just recently gotten additional dehumidifier and then had a connection to our sump. Prior to that, that was actually just in this last year, it was, there were dampness that was making it difficult at times, in damp times, it, you know, you could smell the muskiness downstairs. So that can be, that's, that is more controlled, but nevertheless.
Well, that's one of the reasons why you're moving the classrooms, right?
Right. So in regard to saying that we were moving our existing classrooms upstairs, that's what we, that's how we are functioning every week. What I'm saying is, we could expand or have a variety of Sunday School classes, which would really be kind of extra than what we're doing right now. And if we used one of the classrooms downstairs, that would be more on an extra basis, as opposed to dependent upon that, which is what we're dependent upon right now.
Hey, anyone else? We'll close to the public. Next witness.
Brian Taylor.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
Brian Taylor, T A Y L O R, 95 Watchung Avenue, North Plainfield, New Jersey. All right, Brian, why don't you give the board and members of the public who are here the benefit of your educational and professional background qualifications and experience?
I graduated from the New Jersey Institute of Technology School of Architecture. I'm a licensed New Jersey architect, and I've been in practice for 20 years. And I've testified in various boards in New Jersey such as this.
We're good with that.
Okay. In that capacity, as a registered architect, licensed architect, are you familiar with the Franklin Township land development ordinances and the municipal land use law?
Yes.
All right, are you the project architect?
I am.
So you're the man, huh?
If you say so.
Okay, all right. Did you bring with you tonight any exhibits you want to display to the public?
Yes, I have.
And the board?
And the board. I have a number of drawings which are all in the package that was provided to you, so I'll just go through them.
Right, before you go through them, one of the questions that somebody had before, and it's a basic question, what is the square footage of the addition?
The square footage of the addition is 1,122 square feet.
That's it?
That's the, that's the footprint. The second floor addition that is going over the first floor footprint is 2,680 square feet.
And that's it for addition, correct?
That's it for addition.
Okay.
And just while we're on that topic, I know the question came up of, what was the increase in the size of the fellowship hall? So the original fellowship hall was 1,091 square feet. And on the first floor, although we're increasing the footprint by a little over 1,000 square feet, the actual fellowship hall is only growing by 353 square feet. And, and this, the reality is that the footprint is growing, but we are also accommodating a larger kitchen, because the kitchen right now is very small and cramped. We're accommodating two stairwells, and then we're also accommodating two ADA bathrooms, which are quite larger than the existing bathrooms.
So the stairwells go from the, from the basement all the way to the second floor?
That's correct.
Correct? And the, the bathrooms are on the first floor?
There are bathrooms, there are two bathrooms in the basement, two on the first floor and two on the second floor. And the existing plumbing fixture count was well below what's required by building code. So that, we also brought the plumbing fixture count up to code to accommodate the people.
Okay, before you present the plans, are the plans you're presenting tonight to the board that have been on file and to the public, are those the plans that were reviewed by the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission and based upon their recommendations? Those are the plans?
Correct.
Okay. Microphone, you got to take it. I'll give you this.
Okay, so these are the existing floor plans. On the right-hand side is the existing first floor plan, which shows the existing sanctuary, which is remaining as is. And in the rear of the building, this section I'm pointing to right now is an existing.
All right, you want to identify that for the record? It's plan number, whatever?
This is drawing A001, and it's the existing floor plans. So the existing rear portion is a one-story portion of the building. It includes two very, very small bathrooms. It includes the fellowship hall and the small kitchen with a vestibule that goes outside. The existing basement is shown on the left-hand side. And underneath the existing fellowship hall is just a crawl space, it's non-occupiable. And in fact, a large portion of the rear portion of the sanctuary below is, it's uninhabitable too. It's very, very low ceiling, almost like a crawl space. So the classrooms that we're talking about here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, not only are they not ideal because they're damp because of the flooding that happened, but they have no windows either. So it's not really conducive to a good learning environment for, for the children, and that's one of the reasons why we decided to move them up to the second floor. So I just wanted to give you sort of an overview of, of what the existing floor plans look like.
Okay, you want to identify that, that set of plans?
Yes, this is a drawing A002, and these are the existing exterior elevations. So in looking at the existing left elevation, you can see the left side of the church, the larger structure, and then the existing one-story portion of the building, which obviously was an addition at some point to the church. The roof line really has nothing to do with the architectural style. And in fact, really, there's nothing about it that relates to the church. But that's the existing one-story portion that has the fellowship hall.
So that exists today?
That exists today. Additionally, if you look at the existing rear elevation, again, you'll see the existing one-story portion of that fellowship hall building in the back. It actually has a hip roof in the back. It's, so, you know, architecturally, it really doesn't match. But those are the existing conditions. The other thing I'll just bring to your attention is where the existing steeple was toward the front of the church, and actually, this will be an exhibit that we'll have to mark.
Okay, I think we're up to A5. You want to mark that A5 and put a date on it? And then describe what it is?
These are photographs that I took of the existing conditions of the building. And so, what you'll see in this photo right here is the front of the building. The photo next to it is the left side of the building. You can see the main church and a portion of the fellowship hall in the back. This is the right side of the building, looking from the front. And this is the rear of the building, the right side, from the right side rear of the building, showing the rear of the fellowship hall. But what I wanted to point out was, you can see that the existing steeple, Dwayne will help me out with the year, but I think it was 1972 or 1960 something. In the late 60s, there was a bad storm and it actually toppled the existing steeple. So right now, as it remains, there's a base to the steeple that has a flat roof, and that's what exists at the moment. Okay, so this is a drawing A102. These are the proposed floor plans. On the left-hand side is the proposed first floor plan. And what you'll notice is that the first floor footprint has grown toward the right in the view that we're looking at. And the new first floor contains the fellowship hall. It contains a larger kitchen. It contains two ADA bathrooms, two stair halls, and an entrance vestibule that would be, serve as essentially the, a more functional entrance to the building. We also have a handicap accessible, ADA accessible ramp, so just people with disabilities could easily enter the building. And then on the second floor, or the rear portion here, the second floor extends over the entire first floor footprint, and there are a series of six classrooms ranging from 258 square feet to 342 square feet. There are the two stairs and two additional bathrooms. This is drawing A101, and this is a depiction of the proposed basement area. And again, it's the, essentially, the full footprint of the first floor, contains the two stairs, two bathrooms, and some storage area.
And there'll be no connection between the basement of the, the hall and the basement of the church?
That's correct.
So let me clarify, you just said that the basement's for storage?
No, I said there was, there were two stairs, two bathrooms, and there are a couple of storage closets down there.
What, but what's the main, the largest, there's a large open area. What's, what's the use, what's the intended use of that?
So as I understand it, that would be used mainly as, in one capacity as storage and in the other capacity as any kind of overflow that was needed for the fellowship hall.
And how large is that area?
Well, the entire, the entire footprint is 2,600 square feet, but that, we'd have to deduct for the stairs and the, and the bathrooms. So I would say probably around, you know, 2,000 square feet, give or take.
All right, thank you.
So this next drawing is a drawing A104, and this is, these are the proposed exterior elevations. And so, when we look at the top portion of the drawing, it's the, the east or left side elevation. And so, what this shows is the existing church, massing of the church up toward the front. And then when we added the, the addition to the back, we continued the existing ridge line straight across to kind of preserve the continuity of that roof line. And the portion of the building, the addition that juts out toward the parking lot, has a smaller roof line with the same pitch. And I'm going to show you a perspective in a moment. What we also did too is, you know, we brought the, the second floor addition, the, what we call the second floor top plate, all the way up to match the existing top plate of the existing church, so that we could take this existing freeze work and roof edge and cornice and wrap it around the entire building to create some consistency. Let me just show here. So to kind of look at it in 3D, you can see the existing volume of the church roof continues all the way back. And then the addition that is coming out towards the parking lot is a little bit lower, but it's, it's less wide, so with the same pitch, the roof is lower. And it's sort of these two volumes that are intersecting each other. I almost kind of compare this to like a transept in a, in a, in a more traditional church. So that's essentially what it looks like in 3D. This would be the ramp, this would be the entrance that would enter into the fellowship hall. Additionally, when we went to the Historic Preservation Commission, we did list, gave a full listing of all the materials of the building. They're also listed on the elevations on the drawings. So they approved all the exterior finishes, the windows, the columns, the railings, because we, they wanted to know exactly what materials we were using.
All right, when we went to the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, there was a discussion of a steeple on the addition?
Yes.
You want, and we have an exhibit tonight?
Right, so this drawing, which is, which I've already shown, A104, was revised and resubmitted, I suppose, before this meeting.
They wanted us to.
Okay. So this, this, this will be an exhibit, should I mark it?
So you mark it the exhibit, yep. And I think we're up to A6.
So this. I wanted, before we go any further, I wanted to ask one question. Are there any handicap parking spaces next to where that new ramp is going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
So the difference between this exhibit and, and I guess actually the original drawings that were submitted are, we're kind of detailing the area of the steeple that I had just mentioned. So it was suggested by the Historic Preservation Commission that we sort of address that flat steeple base and add a pediment to the top. Just to kind of cap it off, I think the church said there were some problems with it leaking and they had been patching it and repairing it. So this will prevent it from leaking and it at least gives it some sort of a, a pediment or, or a sloped roof area. And in doing so, we're increasing the height from 51 feet 8 inches, which is the top of the base, to 56 foot 8 inches. So that would be an additional variance, part of the variance for the, for the height.
Well, no, I'm not sure that's true. Steeple's are exempt, so.
Okay, so scratch that.
So the steeple is in, Historic Commission had recommended that the steeple be increased in height, is that correct? Is that what I'm?
Yes, I would say that.
Okay. Talking about a steeple.
Currently, there's no steeple on the addition though, right?
No, there's no steeple on the addition.
Okay.
So, yeah, we just had the, as I. So as we showed before in the photo, you can see the, it's, I would call it a steeple base because the steeple, the, the vertical portion of it was knocked over during a storm in the late 60s.
Okay.
All right, you have with you what we've just marked A6? It's in your hands, I think.
Well, no, I actually marked this A6. I have.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't need this one.
All right, so, so basically, any modification to that steeple base would be exempt? Where the, where the, and so it leads to my que, the one question I did have on building height, which is, which is, the, the building heights measured to the ridge line, which you had said is going to be continued, meaning the addition is not going to increase the height of the building. You're going to maintain the existing height of the building.
That's correct.
Okay. So then my question is, on the plan that identifies the, the height as 42 feet, but in your plans, you have a height of 46 feet 9 inches as the existing height, is, is that?
Yeah, so, let me address that, hold on one second.
This is just a matter of getting the record straight.
Yep.
Because you're asking for a variance, we want to make sure what that variance is. And basically, the variance would be to, you know, the building's being made larger, so they would need that height variance, but again, they're maintaining that height and we're, need to know exactly what that height is.
Yes, so the, I'm sorry, so the, I don't know which drawing you're looking at, but the.
I'm looking at, so specifically, I'm looking at A104.
Okay.
And I'm looking at the proposed east elevation. And, and then more specifically, the front of the building, that's where, how we measure building height.
Right.
For our definition. At the front of the building, you have ground level of zero, zero feet.
Correct.
And then you have level nine, which is the ridge line of 46 feet 9 inches.
That's correct.
Okay, and that's, so that, that's the, that's the building height.
That's the.
And again, that's the height that you're maintaining.
That's the existing building height, and that's the height that the addition is also coming up to, to match the existing ridge.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So that's where we're asking for the height variance? So that's where we're asking for the height variance, for the addition to match with the existing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, I mean, I, I think I essentially went through the plans and the elevations, the, the height issue, the difference in size between the existing fellowship hall, the new fellowship hall, the existing classrooms on the second floor. So I guess I would take any questions that anyone has?
Or questions?
Um, is he gonna, does he talk about parking, or is it someone who comes after him? Okay.
I did have one question. You had mentioned several upgrades were being made in the kitchen, stairs, bathroom. What's the net increase in area for the common space?
The net increase in area of the common space?
The area that would be open to the members during a service? Or Bible study, or?
Well, I, I don't know if this answers your question, but I mean, the, the fellowship hall, which increases by 353 square feet, and that's going from 1,091 square feet to 1,444 square feet. That's for the fellowship hall itself. The, the overall increase in the first floor footprint is 1,000 square feet, which includes that 400 plus increases in sizes of bathrooms. The kitchen has increased a little bit, and we have additional area being taken up by the two stairs.
What about the, is there increase in area in the classrooms?
The increase in area in the classrooms, that's a good question, and I don't have with me the, I don't have the exact area of those classrooms in the basement, but I'll point them out to you here. So they're essentially this area right here. I'm referring to drawing A 101, which is the, this happens to be the proposed basement floor plan, but this is the existing portion of the, of the existing building. So what we could do- Actually, we can't compare them sides, well, actually, we could compare them side to side. Bear with me. Like to do this on a slideshow, it's a lot easier. So these are the same scale. So if we could see the existing classrooms. And then these are the new classrooms.
New classrooms are on exhibit?
On exhibit A 102. So again, if you just look at the pure area of the floor, it almost looks like it's double, but the reality is that in the second floor addition, there's space taken up again by the stairs and the bathrooms and the corridors. So I, I would say, I mean, it's probably about one and a half times the size, I would, I would guess, if I had to guess.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the question I have is the additional space, about 353 square feet that you're getting, main floor. Kitchen expansion, the bathrooms and all, how much does that leave you for lunch, which is being mentioned here as one of the reasons that helps? So what's the net square feet? How many more people can actually, you know, avail of that facility there?
Right, so as I mentioned, the, the net increase is about, it was, I think, 344 square feet. So I did a quick calculation, and this is really based upon building code, but if we took the entire area of the new fellowship hall at 1,444 square feet, the building code allows for tables and chairs, one occupant per 15 square feet. So if you do the math, it works out to almost 100 people. That would be legally allowed in that room if it were posted as an occupant load, which is very close to the 101 members that you said you currently have. So, and that was part of the purpose of the project was to create a larger fellowship hall to accommodate the existing membership, because it really presently is not large enough to handle the crowds coming from the Sunday service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, if I may. I don't know if I recall it here in testimony, but could you give some testimony regarding the type of architectural material you're going to be using and how you're going to match the new addition with the historical building?
Sure. Okay, so, okay. And again, the, all of these materials were presented before the Historic Preservation Commission for their approval. The existing, sorry, the existing building is, currently has an, a, an aluminum clapboard siding on it, which obviously is not original to the church, but that's what exists. So what we're doing is, on the addition, we're actually putting a, a hardy plank clapboard siding, which is going to be the same exposure, meaning the same height and the same color. It's actually a, a cement fiber board. It's paintable. It'll last, you know, for a long time, it's a good material. And actually, all of the trims around the windows, all of the freeze work and, and cornice work, the rakes on the roof, that's all going to be that same hardy board material, same color. The windows, we've chosen a Marvin Elevate, double hung windows with simulated divided lights. And that's actually, they're not wood windows and they're not vinyl, they're fiberglass. They're called a, a poultrusion. They're very durable, they're used in commercial environments. They'll also be white. Porch columns are going to be permacast columns. They're going to be tapered columns, they're 16 inches in diameter, they're going to be white with the Tuscan base and, and capital, kind of similar to the columns that exist there. The railings are going to be perma-rail plus collection by HBG. Again, they're going to be white. The roofing is going to be a GAF Timberline Ultra HD Fiberglass Roof Shingle, which are the architectural dimensional shingles. They exist now on the building, however, we are going to replace the entire roof so that the roof is consistent. What did I miss here? The exterior door. So we have new double exterior door to the new entrance into the fellowship hall. Those are going to be a heavier grade, cornier aluminum door that's going to be white. And they're, the type of door has the thicker rails and style, so it looks a little bit more architectural. So everything is, is going to match, it's going to be white, it's going to look like the existing building. And we're trying to use the best materials that we can and materials that were approved by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Hey, any others? Open to the public, is there anyone who wants to ask the architect a question concerning his testimony? That's what we're limited to right now. Line up, use, use the mic, please.
You, you can stand in line, it's okay.
Hi, Greg Gilfeather, G.I.L.F.E.A.T.H.E.R., 393 Canal Road, East Millstone, New Jersey. What's the change in the number of occupants allowed in the room in the back?
The change in the number of occupants?
How many, how many?
I would say-
At 15, at 15-
Yeah, so let me just do the math.
A square, how much, 347?
You're talking maximum occupants, sir?
Well, we heard testimony that the, that the room-
Well, I'm just trying to understand, is maximum, you're talking maximum occupants?
Well, he testified that it was, it would now hold 100 people. I was wondering what the change is from what it would currently hold using the same standards.
So if we use the increase in area of the fellowship hall, 344 square feet, from a building code perspective, we'd be able to increase it by 22 occupants.
Okay, so that would mean the current occupancy of that room is 70 some?
More or less.
Okay.
From a building code perspective, right.
Okay, very good.
Okay, next.
I'm Jeff Bertelson from 15 Franklin Street. I live in the house directly south of the church. My question's about water during a flood. I purchased my house in 2008.
Is this more for the engineer?
Yes.
Could you hold that?
Well, you could, why don't you ask, he could ask his question.
Well, it's really about the architecture and it's, let me, let me ask, you can tell me, I'll ask the question, you can tell-
If I can't answer it, I'll, I'll let our engineer do it.
Okay. I purchased my house in 2008. We've had two major incidents of water in our basement. And I, I believe that the parsonage, which lies north of the church, has also had issues with water in its basement. The church currently has problems with water during these groundwater rises that occur. What's the logic in adding a basement to the new addition? Won't it get wet also?
Well, the logic is, it will increase the amount of space that they have, that's the reason for it. There are details that we can incorporate, waterproofing details and drainage details that we can incorporate into the addition, including an exterior footing drain. You're sure? I, I'm trying to give you an explanation. So we can include exterior footing drainage, which is basically wrapped with a filter fabric in gravel. So when you have groundwater that approaches the exterior foundation of the church, it filters through the gravel into the pipe, and then we can drain it into the drainage system that the engineering is providing. We can also include, I'm getting there? That's called hydrostatic pressure, okay? And we can handle that by including a gravel base underneath the slab, like you have in most homes, maybe not the older ones. A gravel base with a, again, a moisture barrier below the slab, and interior footing drains. So the idea is when that hydro, when that water comes up through hydrostatic pressure, it hits the gravel and it immediately goes to the point of least resistance, which is traveling through the gravel until it hits the interior footing drain. That water's collected and then discharged.
Okay, any, any other questions?
Barbara Kissel, I live at 33 Williams Street, and you have to help me on this. Total square footage is 2,000 usable square feet in the basement.
Approx, approximately, right.
1,124 on the first floor, which is the fellow-
No, that's the increase. So the increase-
So what's the actual?
So the actual would be the same as the upper floor, so it's going to be 26, about 2680, right?
So we got 2680, 2680, and 1,000, right? That's, um, 6,000 something, 6,000 square feet.
Correct, right.
How big is this room?
I have no idea.
Miss?
Can you stay next to the mic?
You gotta stay next to the mic, you're backing up, sorry.
I mean, I can go get my laser measure in my car and I can give you a measurement of this room, but-
Well, I just want a visual idea of what we're talking about.
Okay, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12.
I mean, I'm not going to hold you to, you know, I mean, we're-
I don't know, I, I'd say this room is probably 40 by 60.
Makes it-
2,400.
2,400 square feet. So basically, this is the size of the addition, essentially, give or take.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Different shape though, different shape though.
Yeah, I get that.
Right.
But basically-
It's big for a living room, but not for a church.
Well, it's bigger than my whole house.
Okay.
And I live in East Millstone.
But you don't live in a church, though?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Well, that's a debatable question, but that's not for this place. Another question is, why wasn't the basement considered fixing it up, like you just explained, to be a usable space and maybe not make that such a huge addition?
So the basement, the idea is that the basement in terms of usable space is really just for overflow, okay? It's below grade, it has no windows, and again-
Even in the new one?
Even in the new one, right. So the reason why we, one of the main reasons why we want to get the kids out of the basement is to give them a better learning environment. We wouldn't want even the people that are using the fellowship hall to be in a windowless room, we want them to be in a room that has plenty of light and natural ventilation, so that's the reason.
And they're in the room for, I guess, about an hour, an hour and a half, maybe?
I-
And you don't know that, because you're the architect.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, I'm just the architect.
Okay. Because I work at Rutgers in the Department of Art History, and art, art history people are in a basement, in conference rooms-
You can give me a call, maybe I can fix that.
What?
You can give me a call, maybe I can fix that.
I don't know, I'm not sure they're going to let you move Voorhees Hall, but that's okay. But they do have ventilation systems, but they do not have windows. And you're not in it for that long. So they're just, just, I'm just thinking out loud, because I'm looking at this big thing that I just realized is bigger than my whole house.
It's a church.
I know, but 16 people to a bathroom? It seems like a huge amount for 100 people total membership. So that's just, the scale of it seems a little bit out of proportion.
You can roll that into your statement at the end of the hearing, right? Limit yourself to questions.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I got, thank you very much. That's it, I just-
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? First, next.
Barbara Tenbro, 2346 Amel Road, the neighbor to the east. I'm wondering why you're putting all the children upstairs in these classrooms where code dictates that children five or six years and younger need to be on a first floor with access and egress available to them all the time.
Can you give me the code section that says that?
No.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm a preschool teacher and I've had preschools in churches, and I know-
I can assure you, I can assure you that the building meets all the applicable codes.
Well, have you discussed that with FIRE?
I haven't had any discussions with FIRE, but I know what the, what the building code says.
Well, I would contest that.
Okay.
Let me, let me, let me speak to that. He's, he's testifying as an architect that this complies. If this gets approved, they're going to need to get permits. This will get reviewed by all the different subcodes, including the FIRE subcode. So if he's wrong, this plan's not going to happen.
Back to the drawing board.
It's back to the drawing board. But he's testifying as an architect that this complies with code.
My name is Caleb Dagnall, 227 Carlton Club Drive, Scadaway. My question has to do with the interior of the fellowship hall, my first question. Does the square footage, that max increase that you said, the 300 and some odd square feet, does that account for the interior platform ramp and stairs that is not really functional for interior space?
No.
So that would be an additional gain on top?
Correct.
Okay. The second question I have is for the second floor. For those classrooms, when you were doing the comparison to the current ones, I know the current ones all have structural walls that they can't be removed or moved. Is that true for the second floor, or can you collapse, does it have any collapsible walls to increase the interior space of any of the classrooms?
I'm not so sure about your first point, about the ba, existing basement, but I would say that those, and, and the structure has not been designed. That will happen during construction runs.
Not structural, but meaning it's not, it's a, you can't remove the wall to expand the interior space. So let's say we have a group meeting, the men's group, you know, and they're in that room, you have four fixed walls, you can't increase the space. Is that true for the top floor, or can you collapse any of those walls to make the interior space more usable for whatever particular group is meeting on that occasion?
So as far as I know right now, they're going to be just regular stud walls with drywall. Will they be bearing? Probably not structurally, but we're not planning on them being movable partitions.
Thank you.
It, it could be, but I mean, I don't think we ever discussed that.
Okay, then we will close the public. Next witness.
Steve Parker. I believe Mr. Parker was sworn in. Has the board accepted his qualifications as an engineer? Okay, and a planner. All right, Steve, in your capacity, both as a professional engineer and as a professional planner, are you familiar with the Franklin Township Land Development Ordinances, the municipal land use law, the case law involving conditional uses and inherently beneficial uses, and also the federal law that I referred to before, Ralupa?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am.
Now, would you put your engineering hat on and talk about existing features and the site plan?
Yeah, the, the existing property is, is lo, is located at the corner of Franklin Street and Amwell Road. Amwell Road is a county road, contains the, the church building itself, contains the residents of the pastor. And then there's the office building that was mentioned before, a separate office building behind the main structure itself. There is some area for limited parking on the property. Right now, it can fit, I believe, fifteen parking stalls on the, on the site right now. It's a little bit, it's just slightly more than an acre in size total, the property. What we're proposing to do is expand the parking lot to provide about twenty parking stalls to the side of the main structure. Basically, between the, the main structure and the, the residence that's on the property. And then thirteen stalls in the back. Those would be, again, an expansion of an existing very small parking area. There's three stalls back there right now. We wanna provide thirteen stalls total in the back. In addition to that, there's other changes that go along with that. There's a stormwater management system that includes some dry wells that are proposed to be in front of the main structure out there. We're proposing some lighting as required by the ordinance in the new parking areas, and also we're gonna provide some additional landscaping. There will be some tr, three trees that are removed for the project, but we're proposing to, to supplement that by planting some new trees as was shown on the, on site plans that were submitted to the board.
All right, I'm gonna refer you to a series of reports by the board professionals and board staff. First one we're gonna take a look at is this report of CME associates dated December tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Did you have an opportunity to review that with our client?
Yes, I did.
All right, you wanna address the, and be clear on what we're agreeing to and what you need to comment on. And again, for the purposes of the board, we're referring to the December tenth, two thousand and nineteen report.
Yeah, I think we can probably make this very quick. Mr. Chairman, I think we can say we'll comply with all the requirements or requests in that letter. But there are some discussion points that Mr. Russo has brought up that I'd like to go over and discuss. Or we can go through them point by point, whatever you prefer.
Bring up the ones you wanna discuss and what you agree to, you
Okay, great.
We'll just hold you to the stuff you've agreed to, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So, in going through the review letter, on page, on page two, comment number eleven is just a, it, it, he mentions the fact that the, the aisle widths vary from twenty-four feet to twenty-six feet. This is one of the variances that is, are being requested as part of the application. And I just wanna mention, there's in the, in the, the parking lot in the back of the main structure, the aisle is twenty-six feet. And then in the parking area on the side is twenty-four feet. The reason for that is 'cause quite frankly, we just don't have enough room to provide a twenty-six foot wide aisle between the church and the, the residence there. If we made that any wider, it would encroach on the, you know, the, the use of the residence or the church building, so
So, you'll wanna waiver of that?
Exactly. We're requesting a waiver on that. We think twenty-four feet is sufficient. That's what's typically used in most other site plans that we're involved with. On page number three, comment number twelve, we're requesting a waiver as well for the twelve-foot wide driveway aisle to the south of the main structure. That's gonna be the entrance driveway. And that's gonna be one-way traffic. We're proposing that it's twelve feet wide and the ordinance requires a fifteen-foot wide driveway. Again, twelve feet is sufficient for one-way traffic. We think that's adequate.
How wide is a car?
Well, let's put it this way. A garage door is maybe eight feet wide.
Right.
It'll fit between there, so a car is maybe seven feet.
So, you wanna waiver of that as well?
Correct.
And you think the waiver is appropriate, your testimony?
I do think it's appropriate, yes. Comment number fifteen talks about light levels. We are proposing some light fixtures in the parking lots. There's gonna be a total of five pole-mounted lights and then four building-mounted lights to provide lighting in the parking area and then also in the driveway aisles also. The ordinance does not allow any light levels that exceed zero beyond the property lines where there's an adjacent residential zone or, or house. The light levels will exceed, that will exceed zero, basically along that right-hand side of the main structure, the south side of the main structure in that twelve-foot wide aisle we talked about. What we're doing is providing lighting in accordance with the, with the ordinance. And we're providing a type of light that will be mounted on the building. It's called a shoebox type fixture. And what that does is it directs light downward rather than broadcast it out in a, in a, in a fashion like like a more architectural-style light. So, there will be some spillage of the light beyond the property line. We're, we're doing what we can, to the extent that we can, to minimize that, but it will exceed zero-foot candles. And by the way, the Historic Preservation Commission did request there's three pole-mounted light fixtures in the parking lot between the house and the main structure. Historic Preservation requested that those be an architectural-style light. And if the fixture that we're, we're proposing is shown on, on sheet six, it's a, it, those are the type, that is the type of fixture that, you know, kind of broadcasts light out. Looks like a an old-fashioned-style street lamp that you would see. But those are between the, the residence on this property and the main structure, they preferred that because they liked the way it would look. The other lights that are surrounding the, near the, or adjacent to the residential uses are the shoebox-type fixtures that direct light downward. So, we are requesting a waiver from that item number fifteen.
So, that would be a waiver as opposed to a
Well, I think it's a variance.
A variance?
I said, I said waiver. It is a variance.
Now, can you just go back for a second? I must, I don't know whether I missed this or not, but what about thirteen? Did you address that? Is that also a
I haven't yet. Those, the variances I was gonna discuss a little bit later on.
Okay.
Planning testimony.
All right.
Let's, if I could stop you with the lighting. So, on sheet six, with respect to the, you said Historic Commission wanted a more traditional-looking light. So, that's the luminaire detail that's on sheet six.
That's correct.
And that has, it looks traditional, but it look, but it has the source of light up in the top. So, it, again, it looks like traditional, but you won't see the, it kinda looks like it's like a torch, but it, the light is actually up in the housing up on the top, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's two lights in that back parking lot that are presumably that type of light. And they're basically, because of the shape of the lot, they're basically right on the property line.
Those are actually, they're gonna be the shoebox-type fixtures. There's only three of those traditional architectural-style lights. They're the ones between the house, on this property and the main structure. The two in the back
Light type C?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then the lighting that's on the, I'll just say, the south side of the church, along the one-way driveway. Those are wall-pack lights, right? And those are also shoebox, you know, contained, but how, how, how high would the mounting height be?
Those are mounted at fifteen feet.
And would there be any? So, because they're on the wall, and again, the, the light's gonna be shining down, but nonetheless, the light's kind of, in a way, facing the neighbor. Would there be less light intrusion if it was in the form of a freestanding light with a houseside shield?
So, yeah, we looked at that option. I think what you're saying is maybe we put a pole on the property line and direct that into the site.
Yes.
Is that what you mean? Okay.
Would that, would that reduce, would that result in less light spillage onto the neighbor?
You know what? I think you could put a cutoff shield on that light and you could reduce it, the, the light spillage greatly. However, I think it would have gra, a greater impact on that property because it's gonna be right on the property line. It would probably have to be about fifteen feet tall anyway, so while you won't technically, technically get spillage onto that property, I think it would provide, you're still gonna see the light because of where it is and how high it is. And I think that would be more of a, of a impact to that property than where we have it proposed.
So, basically, it's your opinion that it's you need to have light of a sufficient height of fifteen feet to illuminate that driveway. It's better to have it on the building about fifteen feet off of the property line than in a freestanding light that essentially is on the property line.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Comment number nineteen on page three, I think we talked about, Mr. Muller talked about the dumpster. That'll be accessed during times when there's no one there. I think that's all that I have to address in the engineer's letter. The other comments we will Oh, there's, there's, there already is a gate there. He, I think he ma, he mentions the fact that there should be a gate in the fence in the area east of the parsonage building. There is a gate there already.
So, the rest of the CME report?
We can comply with, and we'll provide that information or make the changes that are requested there.
All right, so, but for the discussion items that you raised, we'll comply with the remainder of the report, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, now, in addition to the CME report, did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Healy's twelve-nineteen-nineteen memorandum?
Yes, I did.
And now, we're getting into the variance testimony.
Right, and I think, so just, we'll just go through, Mr. Healy's letter kinda starts on page two with bit of a project description and then goes into describe what the variances are. And there's gonna, there's a total of seven D-three variances and then one C-variance. So, we'll go through those one by one.
All right, and again, for purposes of the record and the board and the public, D-three variances are what would are termed to be conditional-use variances, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Which means a departure from the conditional-use requirements of the zone.
Yes, that's correct. The, the building height was discussed with Mr. Taylor, the architect. Thirty-five feet maximum is what's allowed. Forty-six feet nine inches is what's proposed. And again, I think he talked about that, that's maintaining the, the height that's there already. We're not increasing that. But because it is getting larger, that is, that is considered a variance. The second, off-street parking, three hundred and forty-five parking stalls are required.
Let's stop there. Do you see any detriment for matching the height?
No, I don't.
Okay.
The off-street parking, three hundred and forty-five stalls are required based upon the calculations in the ordinance.
No, that's based on Mr. Healy's calculations, I think.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Dolan will provide her calculations based on the ordinance.
Okay, and we're proposing thirty-three. Thirty-three is what we can, what we can fit on a site reasonably. We actually did have
Was it thirty-three or thirty-two? I've seen both.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay.
The, the plan that was originally submitted to the Historic Preservation Committee included parking stalls in front of, or along Amwell Road, between Amwell Road and the, the residence on this property. After the discussion with them, we, that was removed and, and taken out. So, it's an unusual-shaped property. There are some unique features here with the placement of the building itself, the shape of the property. We've really fit as many stalls as we can on there. And again, that's in an effort to, two things, to provide a safer environment for those who are attending the church, to remove some of the parking from the street, and also to come as close to complying with the ordinance as we can.
So, based on a site plan analysis, that would be the maximum you believe, you would feel comfortable with placing on the site. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. The comments, yeah, three and four, or variances three and four are really kind of the same thing. And I'll just read through what, what the, Mr. Healy says. He says, "The majority of the parking shall be located to the rear of the main structure with no more than ten percent of the total parking located at the front entrance." The ordinance says and requires. What we're proposing is twenty parking stalls on the side of the main structure. And thirteen stalls are proposed in the rear. So, clearly, the majority of the parking stalls are on the side of the structure, not in the rear. So, there's a, that's, that's the variance for that. The variance requirement there. There, there's, there's, we can't fit any more parking stalls in the rear of the structure. Again, just because of the location of it, the size of the property and the existing shape that it is. So, that's a variance that we're requesting based upon the existing conditions and, and site conditions. The next variance says, "No parking or access driveways shall be permitted within any required buffer area." There's a fifteen-foot minimum buffer area required around a property or around parking area and an adjacent residential use or property. What's proposing in the back part of the main structure is we're proposing it to be about one foot off the property line. We just don't have the room to provide a buffer. There is proposed a six-foot board fence right along the, the parking area, so there will be a fence between the parking lot and the property.
So, that'll be a buffer. The fence will be a buffer.
The fence will be a buffer. That's correct.
But but you just can't be fifteen feet away from that buffer?
That's correct, yes.
If I could offer some, some suggestions. So, yes, they certainly absolutely have a site constraint. I mean, normally, the, the conditional-use requirement, and it's intended to protect, I mean, this is a, a church and, and, like most of our churches are in residential zones. So, it's intended to protect the neighbors. So, two suggestions I have. One is, maybe it's, maybe it's the way the detail was drawn, but the way that the deep, it seems to be that the fence has holes in between the slats. I mean, it's indicated as a board-on-board fence, but that's not the way it's drawn. But you're saying that it's gonna be a solid board-on-board fence?
Solid board fence, correct.
Okay, so you need to change the detail to make that a little bit more clear.
Yep.
And then my second suggestion would be, it's kind of two somewhat-related points in the ordinance. One is, again, the, the buffer is supposed to be a fence and a double-staggered row of evergreens. Then we have the other ordinance requirement that talks about tree replacement. So, my recommendation is if the board is inclined to approve the application, that, the applicant look to add some additional evergreen trees where they can. There definitely is some opportunities around. It's not all one foot. There are places where the, where the buffer increases.
Right, there are, and there's, and there's virtually no buffering there now.
So, they should look for more opportunities, both to meet the tree replacement and to meet the buffering to the greatest extent that they can.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation. Yeah.
Say that again?
But that they, that, first of all, they need to amend the detail to make it clear that it's a solid fence going along. The location where they've shown the fence is appropriate. It goes all around the entire perimeter of the parking lot. And that they supplement the proposed landscaping with, with as much evergreen plantings as is practical.
We need, we need that to be the buffering condition to be subject to someone's inspection. And so that some joint decisions can be made where, where it can be done, where it can't be done.
I nominate Mark Healy.
Yeah, what is typical
I second the nomination.
They would have to put that on their plans and then staff make sure that they build the plans per, you know, as approved.
Council has a condition of approval if it counts.
Yes, we agree to the condition of approval, subject to Mr. Healy's reasonable satisfaction.
And you would submit a updated landscaping plan to that effect?
Uh, yes.
I think number, the, the next variance we talked about already was the, oh, no, I'm sorry, the landscape buffers. This is kind of the same thing. It's, it's a, the comment says, "Buffering landscaping and/or fencing shall be required where any yard is adjacent to a residential zone or residence, fifteen-foot minimum." Again, we're proposing one foot and a fence, a solid board fence as the buffer there.
So, we've agreed to revise the plan with those two items, the solid fence and additional evergreens where practicable, subject to Mr. Healy's review.
Yes, that's correct. The last D-three variance is the lighting, and again, we talked about that, so unless there's any more questions on that. The next variance is identified as a C-variance. That is the interior driveway width. Again, we discussed that previously, twenty-six feet versus twenty-four feet. We've complied where we could and we, we just can't comply in that other parking area. There's one more variance we talked about for the sign.
Sign.
I just bring that up.
To calculate.
I don't know what the exact size of that sign is.
I, I think what, I think, again, if the board's inclined to approve it, I think, I think the resolution could state something to the effect that, you know, the locations, height and size is indicated in exhibits A-one through A-four. And then the applicant does need, I think I heard that the applicant did not obtain permits. So, they really need to obtain the permits and that would have to be reflective of, frankly, what exists.
Yeah, it looks like the sign faces about
Well, we would need a variance, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think, I think the resolution would, would, in the absence of having dimensions right now, you do have exhibits that show the location, height, and size of, of the existing sign, so you know, again, in the absence of dimensions, I think, you know, A-one through A-four will have to, and the site plan.
I, I mean, I can, I can tell you the dimension, the, the sign face is about just under twenty square feet. It's about four feet by four and a half feet roughly, and it's about, the, the, the pillars on the side are about eight feet tall.
Okay, so, and then it's maybe we are getting there. So, then, and then you do show the location of the sign on the site plan. Do you have dimensions for the existing setback? Both from
Site plan.
On the site plan, on sheet three, for example, it does show the sign. On the site plan, on sheet three, for example, it does show the sign. Looks like it's as close as one foot.
So, the dimension from Amwell Road is approximately two feet, and the dimension from Franklin Street is about one foot.
Okay. So, then, then it sounds like the only variance, variances for the sign would be those two setbacks. Is that correct? Because it's a twenty-five-square-foot maximum area and a ten-foot height, and you're indicating that it complies.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. With respect to the conditional use variances, you're, of course, familiar with the Coventry Square case and the requirements of establishing the positive criteria.
Correct.
Okay. You want to go through that analysis with the board?
Yeah. Churches have been determined to be inherently beneficial. Inherently beneficial use is a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. So, because of the inherently beneficial designation, a church presumptively satisfies the positive criteria under the variance statute.
Okay. And with respect to the conditional use aspects of it, is it your opinion that the site remains suitable for the use despite the deviations from the standards you've just indicated?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
However, the board must still find that the application satisfies the negative criteria, although the criteria does not depend on the enhanced quality of proof. The standard is greatly lessened, and the board is asked to weigh, on balance, whether the grant of the variance would cause a substantial detriment to the public good. This does not mean that there will be no negative effect, but rather, on balance, the positive criteria outweighs the negative criteria. And the balancing test is this. There's four elements to the balancing test. The board should evaluate the public interest served by the church, identify any adverse consequences of granting the variance, consider conditions which might be imposed to mitigate any adverse consequences, and then balance the public interest in granting the variance versus the adverse impact. And determine whether, on balance, there would be a substantial detriment to the public good if the variance were granted.
And I think you've testified for the, the one C variance. That's the twenty-four feet. Okay.
Correct. Yes.
Now, did you have an opportunity to review the other reports? And let's go down in order. There was a report issued by Jose, Officer Jose Enheimi, dated December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. He's recommending that the, you relocate the door that leads directly out into the travel lane from the classroom office building.
Yes, correct. And, and, and the applicant agrees to do that.
Okay. Patricia Elliott from the Board of Health issued a memo December sixteenth. She indicates the Health Department has no objection to the application, except the plans for the proposed kitchen must be approved by the Health Department prior to construction permits. There's no issue with that.
Correct.
Okay. Again, John House, for the record, on January second, two thousand and twenty. From Fire Prevention, he says, "Has no objections to the revised application."
Correct.
And Paul Wolitsky, I believe from the Environmental Commission, issued a, I guess, an email dated December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, reflecting an Environmental Commission meeting dated December sixteenth. And his comment is that the applicant has revised plans to include pervious pavement for two-point-five percent. This will allow them to get below the maximum of sixty percent. The Environmental Commission recommends they increase the use of pervious pavement. What do you think?
Well.
Wait, even before you get to that, the first person who testified said that what was, and I've been holding on to this, that they were going to take what was now gravel areas in the parking lot, and they were going to pave them. So, that sounded to me to be inconsistent with the idea of pervious surfacing. Now, can, is, is, how does pervious, how does pervious surfacing relate to the idea of paving?
So, pervious pavement is a, is a specific kind of pavement that allows stormwater runoff to actually infiltrate down through it. There's a special mix in the asphalt formula, basically, that, that excludes the, the finer grain elements, and it allows for the water to penetrate, you know, through that. So, that's a requirement for, actually, of the Delaware and Martin Canal, that we provide some pervious pavement here to allow for some.
Rejoin, yeah.
Of the stormwater runoff. So, we're providing that in accordance with what their requirements are, to provide water quality treatment of the, some of the runoff from the parking areas.
So, then, then what he said is actually correct. You are going to pave some areas, but you're going to use a particular kind of paving material that, that allows for the infiltration of the water.
That's correct. Now, parts are going to be just standard pavement, and then there's one section that's going to be the pervious pavement. So, it's not all pervious pavement, just one part of it is.
But it will be enough pervious pavement for you to qualify for the, for what, there's sort of ten percent gives you an, okay.
Correct.
All right. Okay. And then, there's a report from DPW. They have no comments. And finally, the Franklin Township Sewerage Authority on January first, two thousand and twenty. Did you review that?
Yes, I did.
And you want to address that?
Yeah. I mean, it, the, the, the second paragraph says, "If a new sanitary sewer connection is being proposed, the following items are required." We're not proposing a new sanitary sewer connection. So, there's nothing really in that letter that even applies.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Anything from the board?
Any questions, Mr. Jordan? What, what is the cartway width of Franklin Street? It's twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet. Okay. And I ask that, it's actually related to a zoning requirement. So, that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, we'll open to the public again for questions concerning this witness's testimony only. Does questions? No. We're not looking for opinions or statements.
So, I'm just learning about this pervious, pervious pavement idea. It seems to me that you're paving about forty percent of your property, of the property. Now, much of that is currently gravel, which I understand that the township considers to be the same as pavement. But in my mind, gravel seems more pervious than pavement. So, with such a huge amount of paved addition, I think the water's problem is going to get worse. I already have a problem. You are adding an extra, you, you're, you'll be paved on two sides of my property. Certainly, the new pavement in back of the house is going to add, that is higher ground than my house. So, it's not going to flow away from me. It's going to flow to me. If my water problem increases, what are my recourse's? Do I sue the board? Do I sue the church? Do I have to prove personally that my water problem has worsened?
Eric, if I can make a suggestion?
Sure.
To have the engineer explain what, what you're proposing on the site plan for stormwater and which direction it's going now, what direction may be going, if it's going to change, if it's going to be, if it's going to be detained.
I, I believe I understood him to say that two-point-five percent of the pavement, pavement would become pervious.
I, I think there's some other things he, he needs to explain.
Okay.
So, so the site includes, in addition to the pervious pavement, it includes the installation of some drywells that we're, we're installing in front of the church. And the idea with those is to capture the runoff that comes basically off the roof of the building itself. And then, it's going to direct that underground into the, into the, the soil in front of the church. So, the, the town, the township has standards for stormwater management, and we're required to meet those, you know, those standards for reducing, not only reducing the rate of runoff, but also providing for some infiltration as well. What we're proposing does do that. So, there may be some areas in the back where, behind the main structure, where we're adding pavement where there's not any now. But then, we're basically taking the runoff from the church building that runs in that direction now and directing that into the ground. So, there will no longer be surface runoff. So, that's kind of what the, what the ordinance requires. And we've met those requirements. And in fact, Mr. Russo has reviewed that and, and agreed with that.
You're not, are you going to exacerbate this gentleman's concerns?
No.
It will not be worse?
Correct.
I mean, has a hydrologist or a, a water engineer of some sort studied this and agreed with you?
For me or for the board?
Uh, I think for you. Are you confident in that? I mean.
Well, we've designed.
You're telling me there's going to be no problem?
We've designed the system to meet the requirements that the board and the township have for addressing the stormwater runoff. It includes the, the use of the drywall and the, and the pervious pavement. You know, calculations that, that we do as engineers are designed based upon standards and practices that have been established by this township and other townships as well. And we use those methods to address stormwater runoff.
But I understand all what you're saying, too. But is that going to aggravate his problem or relieve it a little bit?
I don't think we're going to relieve his problem, but we're not going to aggravate it.
Okay. Well, tell him that, not me, please.
Okay. I, I don't think we're going to aggrav, we're not going to aggravate your problem, but we're not going to relieve it.
You hear him. And I'm asking specifically, you know, you can meet all the township's standards, and your problem might still get worse. He's saying it's not.
Oh, I understand. I.
Not too much we can do.
If it does get worse, I mean, I guess my question becomes for you, and it may be at a later date that I ask it. But what do I do? Incur all those costs myself to prove it? But I, I, I personally feel that as, as a residential property of an acre plus, I would not be allowed to pave sixty percent of my property or cover it with buildings and pavement.
The ordinance allows it.
Would, would allow it?
Yeah. There's no variance for impervious coverage in this application.
Because it's, okay. Well, I put a sidewalk in about five years ago, and I was told I, it only could be a certain size because I would probably begin exceeding the percentage of.
That's part of the church's zoning requirements. I think it's sixty percent is the max.
That's correct.
So, the rules are different.
That's right.
Church. Okay.
And sir, to, to answer one of your questions, and I can't speak to, I don't review the stormwater, but the, the plan is prepared by an engineer, and it gets reviewed by the township engineer, and it gets reviewed by engineers from the Delaware and Martin Canal Commission. So, we're not just relying upon his design and what he's telling us. Those reports, which can be very big, get reviewed by at least two other outside engineers.
So, you're confident that.
Again, I can't, I can't speak to it. All I'm telling you is, it gets prepared by a licensed engineer, and it gets reviewed by our professional engineer and the engineers at the Delaware and Martin Canal.
I should be confident that these folks probably know how much groundwater we get in our basements during a major flood.
That's all, really, honestly, that's all I can say about it.
They probably, they may not know.
Or I can't speak, I, as I, I prefaced my comment by saying, "I'm not an engineer. I don't review the stormwater." So, it shouldn't be, that question should not be directed to me.
You know, I really don't want to be a stick in the mud here. But, I mean, it's like, aren't you leaving me with a, well, tough, if it happens, situation? Well, thanks for your help.
Thank you. Yes.
Barbara Tenbrook, and I'd like to support Jeff's worries with my own worries. But I do have kind of an old story.
Okay. We need questions.
No, 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 about trusting engineers. I was here in nineteen ninety-two with Mr. Linus and the church. They, uh, they wanted to pave the parking lot, same problem. Toward the end, after about a year of testimony, Van Cleef Engineering showed us some drawings, and they were going to pave over their septic system, laterals and everything. So, you can respect our distrust over engineers. East Millstone is a watershed from Wortman Street to Franklin to William and to Market Street. The water, stormwater runs down toward the Millstone River. It catches us on the Franklin, on the Franklin Street side, to the William Street side, to the Market Street side. We flood. Any surface that you're going to put in that you call impervious is going to one-hundred percent, I guarantee, affect the flooding in our house. And I want to know the answer to the question that Jeff asked. What is our recourse? First of all, I live in a seventeen sixty-three house that I preserve. I do nothing to modernize it. I suffer with all kinds of repairs to my house. Why? To make Franklin Township look good. You have to support we residents. Jeff's house is an antique house. He's trying to preserve it because East Millstone is a historic district, a national historic district. It is on the Millstone Valley National Scenic Byway.
I understand, I understand your passion, but we need a question.
I want to know our recourse. If you approve this application and we flood, we need answers.
All we can do here is evaluate the testimony. We're not, I don't think there is an engineer up here, sitting here. You heard, as Mr. Healy said, this has been reviewed by three different sets of engineers.
But so was the nineteen ninety-two application, which turned out to be defeated.
I understand what you're saying, but there's no septic system that we're going to be paving over.
Oh, I know. I checked it out. They're hooked up to sewer now.
I can't address what they did in nineteen ninety-two.
Yeah, but you can address now.
We can go by what's presented here tonight. I, as I said, I understand your passion about the subject, but we can't make any guarantees for the township. I can't tell you, no one here can tell you where to go. You have the, we have the best information that we can get here tonight in order to make the best possible decision. And.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if you do, that's my last question. I'm wondering if you do have the best information.
Okay, next.
All right. My question is, you tell me that there's a buffer that's in the code.
You just want to state your name again for the record?
Oh, sorry. Barbara Kissel.
So, that, there is a record here tonight. So, we do want to establish that.
Barbara Kissel, thirty-three William Street. You tell me that there is a code that says you have to have a twelve-foot area for buffer. Is that, am I correct on that?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet. Okay, thanks. You only have, you can only provide one foot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then, you can put your parking places there.
Just to clarify.
Why, why do we have a code?
Wait, wait. He's speaking. Listen to what he says.
The one foot is the smallest, and there are other places where it's larger. It's not one foot all the way around, just to make the record clear. And the plans show where it gets as large as twenty-five feet, and sometimes it gets less. And there's one place where it goes down to one foot, one stretch of parking lot.
And that's, that's the reason they're here for, that's one of the variants.
Right. And I'm asking, why do we have a code if you're going to give a variance where there's a code to protect the house owner? I mean, I just, this is residential area.
Let me try and stab an answer at that. We're applying, we're applying, applying for a variance.
Yeah.
And the board will either grant the variance or deny the variance based on the proofs presented.
Right.
We're entitled, we're entitled to apply for the variance.
Okay. Okay. All right. Now, do I address in my comments at the end, the impact of the four things?
Yes. You have one more witness to go, and then you can say.
No, that's okay. I just.
Okay. Any others?
Hi. Greg Gilfeather, three-nine-three Canal Road, East Millstone. Question is, in the back portion where the new parking lot is going to be put in, behind the gentleman's house here, what specific measures have been taken? specific measures have been taken? And what's the buffer width in that area to stop the rain? I realize your total rainwater runoff is reduced or is within limits for the property as a whole, but for that section of the new proposed parking lot, what is the runoff from that specific section into his property?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't have a rate for that particular section.
But what are the mitigations for just normal rainwater that's coming down to?
Well, yeah, I think, I think when we look at this, we have to look at the entire site, not just one small particular area. So-
Well, that one, that one small particular area is sort of a peninsula off the property, is it not?
Right. But so the runoff, some of the runoff that goes to that area come, right now comes from the main structure. So that's going to be eliminated. So while some may come from the pavement in the back, it's going to be eliminated from another area that presently flows there as well. So it's, it's, you, it's-
Well, it's currently impervious, it's currently grass, I assume. And it's now going to become paved. Is that going to be the new pervious, fancy pervious pavement that's going to be put in that back section?
No, the, the area back there is just standard straight pavement.
So everything that hits it, since it all runs downhill, will, if there's no other mitigations, how wide is the buffer there between that and the gentleman's house or gentleman's property line?
So the, right now, actually, we're going to be increasing the buffer over on that side. Right now, the driveway, the existing driveway basically goes right up to the property line, and we're going to be removing some of the pavement along the southerly property line.
I'm talking about the peninsula portion that sticks out in the back.
Okay, but this is part of that. The, so in the one section, it's going to be about, removed about three feet further away from the property line. And that's going to be a, you know, a planted strip or a buffer strip in there. But at the closest point, it's going to stay the same as what it is. It's, well, I shouldn't say it's going to be increased, but it's going to be about, the closest point, about a foot. And then at the furthest point, it's going to be about 11 feet.
So we have a triangle there, one foot area where we're putting in a pervious surface, which will, since it slopes towards the gentleman's house with no mitigation in place for that particular water.
So the one foot, the one foot area is actually going to be an increase over what's there now, because right now, it's right on the property line. So we're going to be pulling it, pulling the new driveway further away from the property than the existing driveway is right now. But-
My understanding that, that's new, that's new parking that's being put in in the back peninsula area there?
Right. But there's some, there's some parking back there now that exists. And then the, there's some new parking further to the south in that, you know, you had a, call it a peninsula, that odd-shaped extension of the property back there. So there's, we're not proposing anything back there. We're not proposing a dry well or pervious pavement back there. But again, when we look at the calculations and what your ordinance requires is that we look at the site as a whole, and then, you know, consider, meet the requirements based upon the diminishing or decreasing the rate of runoff. Well, we can't increase it. So that's, we've met those requirements. And again, we're going to be decreasing it from the area south of the main structure by capturing the runoff from the roof area and by eliminating some of the existing impervious surface that's there now.
But that, that would be downhill from the property, peninsula area?
No, it all flows over in that, in that direction.
Currently, right?
Correct.
If you had a 15-foot buffer that's currently required between the parking lot and the residential area, would that help reduce the runoff, that 15 feet of presumably evergreens and plantings and things of that nature?
Well, we wouldn't have a parking lot then, because we don't have the room. If we, if we were required to have a 15-foot buffer there, we couldn't fit the parking lot.
And if you had a 15-foot buffer on both sides, the, on that peninsula, how big of a parking area could you put in?
None.
So that entire parking area is essentially non-conforming?
Well, it's within, it's, that's what we're requesting, a variance for the buffer area.
How many cars currently attend service?
Well, yeah, the next witness is going to discuss the, the number of cars with traffic counts, parking counts.
How many cars currently park on the site?
I think the next engineer can address those questions better than I can.
Thank you.
Patricia Love, 393 Canal Road. I have a question. Just to clarify, you said that there are dry wells that are going to be placed to capture the runoff from the church itself, from the roof of the church? Is that right?
That's correct.
And so currently, the, the roof runoff is not being captured by anything. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so the, the roof runoff is actually going across the street to the Anka property on the other side of Franklin Street. Is that right?
Some flows out toward Franklin Street, some flows to the south.
Okay. And so it, it, it doesn't affect an adjacent property right now? The water from the church roof does not affect an adjacent property right now?
No, it does. It affects the property to the south. That's where it flows.
Okay. And that would be the gentleman who spoke earlier, his property? Is that what you're talking about?
I believe that, I believe that's where he lives. Lot 1.02.
Okay. So although the, the net change in, in runoff, I think you said there's not any change because of the dry wells that you're putting in?
Correct.
But there, there is a qualitative change that will occur because of that back parking lot having runoff and there being very little buffer between that parking lot and the adjacent property. In other words, the water that used to run off from the church roof is now going to be water that runs off from that back parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make that clear. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Dave Scudder, 43 Livingston Avenue in Somerset. My take is that the planting plan is sort of up in the air. Is that, is that correct? I see an old plan that lists 11, looks like evergreen trees in the back by the fences, and a few bushes by the front yard. And that's all it sees, all it says. So is there another plan that talks about more, more shrubbery, more trees going in?
What's going to happen is we're going to do a, we're going to do a resolution. And in part of the resolution, we will say that there's going to be a solid board fence and that where it's possible, trees and other vegetation will be planted to the satisfaction of Mark Healy. So where there's 15 feet available, there'll be trees and vegetation planted there for the, for the areas that are thinner. And then Mark will eventually have an approval over that. But, but yes, you're right, it is up in the air. It was one of the things we didn't like so much about the, the plan that they put in.
Will there be an opportunity to make some suggestions or to ask for other possibilities?
I think that if you spoke to Mr. Healy in a nice way, you could probably get that kind of cooperation.
And Mr. Healy is, I don't know him.
He's right there.
Hi, everybody.
He's been, he's been part of the show.
Oh, I wasn't, I, Mike, I'm sorry. I didn't see the, the tag. Can I ask a question of you then, right now? Is it possible to think about some tall trees at the front entrance on Franklin? Because right now, the plan shows a couple of little bushes on either side of the driveway. And there's going to be a big parking lot there. And right along Franklin, on the, on the main road, a couple of large trees on either side of the, of the entrance would make a big difference in softening the, the parking lot tremendously. Another question on the plan-
Let me, let's stop you there, Dave. You want to respond to that?
We do, we do show a, a tree there to be planted there. There's one, a new one on the north side of the entrance right here. And there's already an existing tree right there.
Okay.
18-inch tree, large tree.
Okay. So that, that doesn't show on, ask you what these little guys here are? These are evergreens?
Those are evergreens, correct. Yep. And those are, those are going to be subject to the review of Mr. Healy, and I suspect it's going to change to provide more-
With respect, with respect to worrying or trying to figure out ways to plant trees in the buffer, most of what I've seen tends to be evergreens, which obviously get tall in our screening year round, but most evergreens tend to be really wide at the bottom. If, if this is a Leyland Cypress, which I think that might be the, the CL, that might get 30, 40 feet tall. It's going to be probably 20, 15 feet wide when it's 30 to 40 feet tall. The oak tree that's being removed behind, behind the, the addition, there's a 48-inch oak tree that's coming down, that tree probably towers above the 46 feet of the roof of this church. It would be wonderful if they can put back some shade trees. If they're, they're deciduous, certainly, but they will tower above the fence, they'll tower above the church, and they'll provide a setting, which would be way nicer than these spiky evergreens as a concept. And I'm certainly not trying to tell you what to do, but it would, it would soften the exterior of the, of the church tremendously as a possibility.
I certainly have no objection to that if that's something that the board wants to put in the condition.
And one more point, or one more question, when you talk about against the fence, certainly you have zero feet, you have what? You have one foot between the pavement and the, and the fence. So yes, you can't plant an evergreen there. It's not going to fit. If, if there was one parking spot every 15 feet, that you could reduce maybe a foot and a half of the parking spot, there's space where you could put a tree right against the fence, which would have branches above the fence. And that's also going to soften the concept. So a deciduous tree might work there. And maybe there could be a couple of parking spots that are for compact cars, as it were, that were not quite as, so you have a little cutout, little planting pocket.
Well, the, the only place where there's only one, for what it's worth, the only place where there's only one foot of buffer-
The peninsula.
Is, is, is on the one side of the peninsula.
Right.
And that is not adjacent to, it's adjacent to a residential property, but it's a residential property that's very deep and the, and the house is actually much further, much further away. So-
The biggest question I had was where that gigantic oak is coming down, that 48-inch tree, there's a spot where the curves of the parking, the curves of the driveway gets very close to the fence. And when that tree is gone, it's going to be, it's going to be, the church is pretty, but from the other house, looking at the church, it's gigantic. And it's a lot closer to the, to the, to the fence now because it's, it's been moved back.
Yeah, there's, there's, there are two places of opportunity on kind of either side around that curve. One near the, the classroom office, there's an existing 12-inch pine. I don't know how big that is. I'd have to look. And then, and then they're proposing the Leyland Cypress to either side. Around the dumpster, they have some Leyland Cypress, and then they have a maple tree a little bit further on. We'd have, I'd have to look at that area, see how much, you know, space frankly is taken up by the existing trees to remain, and what opportunity exists to put either evergreens or shade trees in that area to supplement what's, what's staying.
For what, for what it's worth, whenever they can put some deciduous trees in, it would make a difference.
Yeah. And then your suggestion about, you know, maybe eliminating a space to, to kind of put a tree in the, in the back there, the concern I would have is, you know, we're trying to balance the amount of landscaping and screening versus the desire to have, I think, as much parking on site as possible-
Right.
-to mitigate the impact of, you know, people parking on the street.
Right.
So that's what the board needs to weigh as well. Because if you eliminate, if you eliminate parking, now it's not addressing the parking needs. So the board has to weigh the-
You always could say compact car only in this spot, though, as a possibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public. Next witness, just a moment.
I have a couple of questions, Counselor. Mr. Parker. Mr. Parker, will the, the existing detached classroom building, will those, that roof be connected to the stormwater management system as well?
No.
Why not?
It just, it's too far away to get, to get the flow from that building into that, into the, into the system, the collection system.
Would it be possible to put a dry well in the back of the property to collect that water?
We'd have to look at that. Off the top of my head, I can't answer that. I don't know.
What would be the impediments to that, off the top of your head?
Well, there, there's typically has to be an overflow for the, for the dry well itself so that in the event there's a storm that's greater than what the design flow is, it's got to have somewhere to, to flow. And so in a case like this, we can provide, you know, a grate on top of that that can act as the overflow. But, but if it's got nowhere to go, or it's just going to create a low spot, it's just, it's more of a, of a nuisance than, than being effective. So I, I don't know. We can certainly look into that.
Looking at your site plan sheet, four of six, you catch out the area that's going to be the proposed pervious pavement area. And that is, it looks like to the north of the property along the new driveway, along the frontage of Franklin Street. Why was that location chosen?
That's where, that's how the, the parking lot drains into that area. So that's, so we can capture as much of the pavement to, to drain through there and provide the water quality treatment that we're looking for on that.
The question that I have is, would, could it be served on the single one-way driveway? And would that be a possibility to put the pervious pavement there so that way it would be a minimal impact to the neighbor to the south?
The, the reason that we have that in there is it's, it's, we're trying to capture a certain amount or a certain percentage of the pavement to go, to flow through there. I don't think we would capture that on this, on the south side of the main structure. But that doesn't mean we could put, we just, we could put, we might be able to put some in there anyway as a supplement, leave what we have here now, and just supplement that by adding more over there.
I think that's something to look into, considering the testimony from the public regarding the nature of the property, the slope of the property as it exists. I think that would be a, something to look into and perhaps a, something to submit to the engineering department for review.
Okay. Yes, I agree. We'll look into that.
Hey, thank you.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
Okay, it's getting late. We're going to cut this up a little.
My license is still in good standing.
You still have a license. You've been here about 100 times.
And, and she's testified on houses of worship?
Yes, I have, several in Franklin, yes.
So it's kind of like a sub-specialty?
Yeah.
Okay. You're familiar with Franklin Township Land Development Ordinances and the municipal land use law?
Yes.
You're not? Okay. Familiar with the site and familiar with the application?
Yes.
Have you reviewed the site plan?
Yes.
Is the internal circulation adequate and satisfactory?
Yes, it is. It's a huge improvement over existing conditions. The 12-foot width that was discussed earlier is certainly sufficient for the one-way driveway. Maneuvering the 24-foot circulation aisle is appropriate and is a standard design dimension for a two-way aisle. And in fact, we're proposing it one way, but more importantly, it allows the maneuvering into and out of the parking spaces on either side. And we are increasing the overall parking on site. So it's a, a much better onsite circulation system than currently exists.
Okay. And in your opinion, does the plan adequately account for parking driveway internal circulation from the point of view of safety as well as practicality?
Yes, it meets the appropriate dimensional requirements and allows for safe and efficient maneuverability and parking maneuvers.
All right. Did you submit a report that's part of the record in this matter?
Yes, a brief letter report dated May 21, 2019.
All right. You want to go over that report and what you found?
Sure. Our involvement with the project goes back to 2017. And while we weren't part of the Historic Preservation Committee, it's my understanding that's what's taken a lot of time to get here before the board. So when I first became involved, I visited the site on Sunday, September 17, 2017, to watch what's going on. And I, although it's not recorded in this May 2019 letter, I was back at the site on Sunday, September 29, 2019, to reconfirm what I had originally seen because the applicant had said that basically attendance levels and operations were steady since our original involvement in 2017. So some of the questions that have been asked tonight was how much traffic and how much parking. What we saw was the mag- What we saw was the majority of driveway and vehicular activity occurred from nine fifteen to nine thirty, with twenty-eight vehicles entering and nine vehicles exiting. And that was before the Sunday school. And then before the eleven o'clock service, between ten-thirty and eleven o'clock, another twenty-eight vehicles entering and six vehicles exiting. I think probably more interesting in this application is the parking demand. In the September two thousand seventeen visit and observation, we counted twenty-six cars on-site. So they're, you know, they're jamming them into the site even though there's only about fifteen legitimate spaces. But they're parking as many as twenty-six because when we went back in two thousand nineteen, it was twenty-two. On-street thirty-three at a maximum. So it's a total parking demand of fifty-nine spaces. And with this proposal, we're still not gonna fit everybody on-site, but we're gonna fit more on-site and it'll be better organized so that people can actually use regular-sized parking spaces. As to the parking variance, we summarized in our report the building areas and the associated parking requirements, but we missed the basement. So for the church seating area, the pew space is measured and then one space for every sixty-six inches. So that's a hundred and thirteen spaces required. For the fellowship hall that was discussed tonight with Mr. Taylor, one thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet. One space per fifteen square feet is ninety-six spaces. For the three-bedroom home, RSIS requires another two spaces. If the basement of two thousand square feet is also included, that's another a hundred thirty-three. And that's where we get to the three forty-five spaces in Mr. Healy's report. And it's been my experience with other houses of worship in Franklin that the ordinance tallies all of the parking demand associated with the different areas in the house of worship. And then I've gone on to say after, and you've heard it from Mr. Mueller tonight, that not all the space is used at the same time. If we look at the Institute of Transportation Engineers House of Worship of Information, they suggest calculating parking based upon the seating capacity of the sanctuary because the ancillary building areas vary from house of worship to house of worship. And you've heard a lot about how there's insufficient room outside of the sanctuary to handle the other activities aside from the service. So with ITE data, we've come in at a demand of about sixty-eight spaces. And I said just a few minutes ago, the maximum demand I calculated was fifty-nine. So I think that the ordinance is very conservative because it's looking at the total building area. And in reality, not all parts of the building are going to be occupied at any one time. So more realistic demand might be based on ITE, about sixty-eight. And I think that that does make sense because we counted fifty-nine cars. We're never gonna fit that on the property just because the property is limited. But by providing the modified site plan proposal, we'll be having a more organized parking, well-defined driveways, and hopefully minimizing some of the activity on Franklin. But we're still gonna be parking there.
Right, do you believe in your analysis there would be a net benefit to the community by taking some of the parking off the streets and putting it onto site?
Absolutely.
Have no further questions.
Any questions from the board?
Do you think that twelve-foot drive aisle coming into the site can support a fire truck?
I know that there was review by the fire department. And if it wasn't sufficient, we would definitely be making a modification because anytime Mr. House wants certain circulation, we make that accommodation.
Okay, we'll close this portion. And if there are any questions from the public concerning traffic, this is the witness to ask them.
I'm Greg Gilfeather, three-nine-three Canal Road, East Millstone, New Jersey. From a parking perspective, as an engineer, the one-way parking aisle in the back, is that, I guess you pull in and then you jump out and have somebody wave when you're trying to back out into the traffic flow? Is that a ideal traffic design?
I'm sorry, I missed what you just said.
In the little peninsula that juts out on the back of the property, where it's sort of a drive-in park angular and then, I'm not quite sure how you get out of there. I guess you jump and wave and send somebody to block traffic while you back out into the traffic flow? From a parking perspective, is that a good design?
It's a parking aisle. That's how parking aisles operate. It's a twenty-six-foot width actually in that area, which is greater than our standard twenty-four-foot aisle. So that allows for a vehicle to-
There's a full twenty-six-foot aisle behind the parking area?
In that peninsula, yeah.
There is, okay. We didn't have the plans. We thought, last we saw them, since there was a buffer, there was a, it was pull-in and back-out parking. So they will be able to pull in and then back out?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's plenty of room for those maneuvers, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others?
Do you need my name again? Jeff Bertelson, fifteen Franklin Street. Regarding the peninsula parking, between the fence and the beginning of the pavement, will there be a curb to prevent people from backing into the fence?
I don't believe curbing is proposed.
Okay, would it be prudent?
I think they're proposing wheel stops at the end of each parking space, yeah. And the engineer just confirmed that. So there will be a wheel stop, a concrete wheel stop at the end of each parking space.
At the front of the cars?
Yes.
I think my question pertains to the back of the cars. When they back out, will there be something to prevent them from running into the fence?
I think it's just an edge of pavement. So, but it is twenty-six feet, which exceeds the typical design dimension of twenty-four. So it's a very comfortable back-out aisle.
So it would not be prudent to add a slight curb, something raised there to-
I would have to have Mr. Parker answer that because I don't know how that affects his drainage and design.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, then we'll close this portion to the public. Is there any other testimony before we open for?
No, no further testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and we will open to the public, give you a chance to make a comment, a statement, an opinion, what some of you have been waiting to say, basically, instead of asking the questions. Anybody come up and let it go? This time, though, we need to swear you in.
Need to swear me in?
Yeah, because if you're gonna make a statement, we need to know that you're telling the truth as you see it.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your address.
I'm Jeff Bertelson, B-E-R-T-E-L-S-E-N. My address is fifteen Franklin Street in East Millstone. My statement is that if there are a way to, or if we could have a much higher percentage of the new paved surfaces covered with the impervious material, or, excuse me.
The pervious.
Pervious material. It would reduce my concerns. If in fact, part of the paved area could remain or become, as in the case of the peninsula behind my property, could become a gravel surface or something else pervious, that would also reduce my concerns. I do have a water problem. I don't want to enhance it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Cheryl Frew.
Hold on, please raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. My name is Cheryl Frew. I live at four-three-four Dryden Street, Biscataway, New Jersey. I've been a member of Calvary Baptist Church for twenty years. And I would like to state first of all that we changed our name to Community, Calvary Community Church, because we care very much about the community. I also worked for ten years, one day a week, providing counseling for people at the church from the community that oftentimes at much reduced rates than what they could receive for counseling anywhere else. And I spent many times walking up and down East Millstone, enjoying the beautiful community, talking to people as I walked by. So I wanna, I just wanna give a very positive view. I've also been part of planning baby showers, bridal showers, potluck suppers. In the kitchen that we have, one of the things I'm excited about is we'd have a full basement underneath the kitchen. So hopefully, we could put a hot water heater that could handle us washing dishes there and not run out after, you know, a few things. Because right now, we have like a ten or fifteen gallon hot water heater under the basement. And also, since I worked on certain days of the week, on two separate occasions, I came in and heard gushing water because since the kitchen has been placed over a crawl surface, a crawl area, we didn't have, we don't have piping going into the kitchen that is protected when we get very, very cold water. So on two occasions, when I came in to use the bathrooms that are small in the back, I heard gushing water. And, you know, we've been living and working out of this church, providing services for the community and trying to impact our community in a positive way. And we've been doing it by hook or by crook, you know? So I've learned how to turn off water in the basement, which I didn't know before how to do. And I was so excited to hear about a full basement, a new kitchen. And we just wanna be a good neighbors. And if there's any way that we can be good neighbors, instead of, our neighbors can come and talk to us. So if we can do it better, come and tell us. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your address, please.
Barbara Tenbroe, T-E-N-B-R-O-E-K-E, two-three-four-six Amwell Road, East Millstone. I did, I'm sorry, I forget the name of the person I just spoke. I did try to find out in the community of East Millstone if there was a parishioner so I could talk to them about how Jeff and I feel as neighbors. And there's no one in East Millstone that attends that church. So I have to use this as my forum. I believe that this is an overdevelopment for the piece of property that is available. I am frightened to death about additional flooding. Any surface materials are going to add to the flooding. In addition, the church around two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen took down five or six hugely mature trees. We know that trees suck up about thirty gallons of water a minute when it's flooding. And this was shocking to me, but I didn't realize it was in preparation for another attempt at parking lots. The parking issues as of tonight, I consider very much unresolved. The addition and the driveways are causing light pollution. I'm very happy it's not around your house, but it is around my house. And that's all I wanted to say. I love East Millstone. It's a beautiful community. It's a beautiful church. I do think we had two congregations in town at a church called St. Joseph's. As they expanded, they had to move. There's a lot of wonderful buildings available in Franklin Township, still in the community. And I would suggest that the congregation go look at different pieces of property so they can expand, have air conditioning, have parking, and leave East Millstone quaint.
Okay, anybody?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your address, please.
David Scudder, S-C-U-D-D-E-R, forty-three Livingston Avenue, East Millstone. My comment is, it's kind of a, it's a lose-lose and a win-win. It's very, we have a very fine line between the town trying to accommodate the church and the church trying to accommodate the town. And it's a very difficult concept. From the parking point of view, nothing's gonna change because on a given day, you could find thirty-some-odd cars parking on the church property wherever they can fit and thirty-five cars parking on the road. So there's the sixty or seventy cars that are already parking. So we're, now we're making the pavement to accommodate those thirty-five cars, but they already get there now anyway. Like I said, it's a fine line. I don't have the answer. Do the best you guys can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last.
My name is Mark Twombly, T-W-O-M-B-L-Y. I live on forty-one Magnolia Road, Somerset. We've been attending Calvary Community Church for about the past year. Two of my grown kids were married there. One of them is here tonight and she met, married her husband there. I have two teenage kids who go to the church. And it's just meant a lot to us. It's an extended family to us. The things that we get to learn that really enrich our lives, enrich our relationships are invaluable to us. And, you know, our kids and for us, we'd like to be able to invite more people there and to have them feel comfortable. And it's a little crowded, right, particularly for the time of fellowship afterwards. So I think we're just trying to accommodate that. I really do appreciate you guys listening and actually pushing us to maybe find another property and grow. That's part of expansion. I think these are great things to consider. So I really want to thank the neighbors for really chiming in with their concerns. I'd also like to comment that it seems like most everything has been thought of in terms of drainage and all that. And it seems like it kind of goes above and beyond. I can't think of anything else that would be a concern that hasn't been thought of. I loved the suggestion from Dave about the trees. That was great. And more pervious pavement, I think that's great. I think those things can be easily overcome. But I just wanted to express thanks to you guys for listening and just how much the church means to us in terms of our relationships, our family. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Affirm.
Please state your name and address.
Greg Gilfeather, G-I-L-F-E-A-T-H-E-R, three-nine-three Canal Road, East Millstone, New Jersey. I'd like to thank the church. They had worked with us very well during the historic preservation and did a lot of nice changes, and we do appreciate that. I think that the parking in the back of the gentleman's property on the peninsula is excessive. I understand there is a balancing test that needs to be done against the good and the negatives. I think that our engineer here must have picked a very nice September day to find fifty-eight cars because as David testified, there's usually about seventy cars. All told, for the church, I went three consecutive Sundays, counted up all the cars in the parking lot and all the cars on the street, and about seventy. I don't think that this change is going to significantly impact their parking unless they ignore all of the lines and just park any which way they can, which is probably not the intent. So I don't think that we are doing anything for their parking issue at all. And I would say as part of the balancing test that they either require pervious material for their paved parking lot to balance out the water concerns. I realize that they're not required to do that by code, but they are getting quite a few other variances for a lot of buffers and offsets that would mitigate some of that. And I would request that they do that or eliminate the peninsula. And I would request that they do that or eliminate the peninsula parking, which I, I don't know would meet your balancing test. But I think that a pervious surface could meet your balancing test, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your names and.
Barbara Kissel, K I S S E L L thirty-three Williams Street, East Millstone, New Jersey. I'd like to thank the planning board for listening, or the.
Turn it here.
You whatever, you're here. The board for listening to us and helping guide people like me who don't really know this very well. We do love East Millstone very much. We care very much about it. We welcome people to share it with us. I wish you would consider not allowing them to put parking behind the house, because it really does change what someone bought a house there to live. And they're not gonna get all that many more parking spaces, and they're gonna change dramatically the effect that it will have. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close to the public. Anything you wanna tell the board?
Okay, at the beginning of this application, I indicated that it would be judged by certain legal parameters. That would be the cases we made reference to, the conditional use cases, the inherently beneficial use cases. And that's important, because basically, the only reason we're before the Board of Adjustment and not the Planning Board is because of the D three variances. We are a permitted conditional use. The variances we're seeking jurisdictionally, conditional use variances are properly before this board, and therefore, you, you get jurisdiction over the whole case, the site plan. And I think with respect, so I think you gotta focus first on the D three variances. I think you have to look at each of the variances that we're seeking, and I think you do have to do the net benefit analysis that is required by law and required by an inherently beneficial use, which a church is. And I think when you do that net benefit analysis, I, I think you'll come up with the variances being granted. Let's talk, let's focus in on the parking, because basically, the parking issue is an issue that is of, of concern by the neighbors and quite frankly, concerned by the church. No matter what we do, we're not gonna solve the parking problem. But if you listened carefully, and I know you did, to the testimony of Dwayne Muller, the church administrator, when we asked him, why do you need all these parking spaces on site? And I think his answer was, and the record should bear this out, there are certain people, members of the church or people come to the church who have special needs, who are handicapped, who need access to the facilities, who need access to religious experience, they need access to the classrooms, they need access to what is going on in the church. So without this additional parking, that opportunity is lost for those folks. Now that, now the parking is scrambled. It's a first-come, first-serve, and gravel, and nobody knows where they're going. The second attribute and the net benefit to the community is the organization of the parking spaces. Which then brings us to the, the next concern of the neighbors. And the next concern of the neighbors is the stormwater drainage, the impact of drainage. We provided expert testimony from our engineer that we've complied with all of the stormwater management regulations and went further to indicate that whatever we're doing will not exacerbate any drainage condition against the neighbors. And that, again, provides compliance with your ordinance, which we do comply with. In addition to that, with respect to the D three variances, we've agreed to certain mitigation. Whatever, whatever the board had questioned regarding mitigation, whatever some of the concerns of the neighbors had regarding mitigation, the additional landscaping, the additional buffering, the solid fence, and the other items that were raised, all served to mitigate, which is, again, is part of your thought process and part of the analysis you have to make with respect to the D three variances. So I would urge the board to approve the application, that is, the D three variances, the one C variance, any design waivers, I don't think there were any.
There's two.
Two design waivers?
Two design waivers.
And we.
Plus the location of the sign.
All, everything.
Who's counting?
Everything that was part of the application, the sign came up at, yes. And also preliminary and final site plan approval. So I think when you take into account the federal law, the religious law that, that I've quoted, you take into account that the House of Fire case, which is the, the case on inherently beneficial uses, being a church. And, and I think you also have to take into account that the church has been in existence since eighteen fifty-five. And it's there like any other church, proselytized, to get members, to provide a religious experience for the members. And I think that this application does that. I, you know, it, it sounds like an expansion, because there's more square footage, there's parking on site, but is it really an expansion? What, what it seems to me to be is increasing the functionality, bringing, bringing some of the areas up to code and accommodating the church members. And I don't think when you do that balancing act, that I, I think you come up with the proposition that the net benefits outweigh any detriment.
Okay. Any, any board comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few as they relate to what Mr. Linus was saying. You know, it's, it's funny, they, I, I visited the site and, and it's really what they're trying to do is they're trying to drag that building into the twenty-first century in certain respects. I loved the lady who got up and talked about the, the rushing water and, and all those things. But the real sticker here, it seems, I mean, there's been some comments about the increased size of the building, but I, I think that the, the way that the architect has designed that expansion and that they're tearing down that one old piece and making it a much more cohesive-looking building, I, I think that's a real win right there. And I think the sticker with this application is the parking and whether there's going to be, whether there's, whether, when you weigh the, the benefits of the improved building against the detriments provided by some of the, the changes in the, the landscaping and the parking lot, I mean, it, it's, it's not the easiest decision to make. But, but I, I come down on the, on the side that it, that it is, the, the benefits do outweigh the detriments. But I, I think that the, that I listened to the people who were talking about the parking issue. And I'm sorry, but I've forgotten your name, when you came up and you talked about that you had looked and seen how many cars were out there and the fact that people were parking in a, a sort of a scrambled kind of way. Mr. Linus said, now that they're gonna have lines on the, on the parking lot, it's not gonna be a scramble. I, I don't think so. I think it's still gonna be a scramble. Who gets there first is gonna get the spaces. But by saying that, though, I, I, I look at the, the parking issue as, as, as one that's a make or break. I, I think they've done, they're gonna, and they're gonna do, because Mr. Healy's gonna help, they're gonna improve the landscaping. And I'm, I know that Mr. Scudder is going to speak to Mr. Healy on more than one occasion to help him put together a good landscaping project that includes deciduous trees. I think that's a good idea. But I, I think that the, the last part of it is that the, I think that the, that the peninsula portion of the parking lot should be, should be done with pervious material. I think that is the, the last part of it that, that I would suggest that they do. Now, they can either do that portion with pervious material or they can, they can just not put that, that portion in. But I think that if they do that and they also include the drywells that are gonna be capturing water that hasn't captured before, I think that it'll be a really great upgrade for a church that seems to be doing quite well. There weren't a whole lot of people that came up to talk, but I suspect that a, a lot of the people that are here, particularly in the middle section here, all came down in support of this application. So, and you all stayed to the end, which was, which was good. I, so that, that's all I, I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just make one suggestion off of what Mr. Shepherd just said, which is, I think that one of the main concerns that has been raised is the potential change in, you know, some run, additional runoff going on to additional lot, one point oh two. What I would suggest is if the board is, wants to have some condition along those lines, don't just say pervious pavement, because there could be, you know, they could find out, you have to have, you have to have the, the right soils underneath. And if there's not the right soils in that area of the site, then pervious pavement's not gonna work. So what I would suggest is maybe have, have that as a, as a suggestion, but have a condition where the applicant's engineer needs to meet with our engineer and see if there's some ways to reduce the potential runoff onto one point oh two, if that's pervious pavement, or if there's some other means, and have the engineers work it out.
Oh.
But bottom line, don't paint yourself into a corner with, with something that may or may not work.
We're not talking about paint here. Well, one of my suggestions was gonna, or questions was gonna ask for somewhat of a discussion like you just started, and, and the idea of replacing as much impervious pavement with the pervious as possible. I mean, I think you said it was forty percent still impervious or fifty percent, whatever, whatever it was.
Forty percent of the site is, the proposed impervious is sixty, so forty percent is pervious.
Excellent. There ought to be somewhere, places that it can be substituted or, or switched out. Again, as I mentioned to the one person, I forgot his name who was speaking, we're between a rock and a hard place. The engineer can sit here and say, you've met all the standards, and, and you have, I'm sure you have. It's been reviewed by three sets of engineers. It still does not mean that a couple of people are not gonna have trouble. The standards, you know, are the standards, but other things happen. I think we need to see if we can do a little bit more in terms of that. I think otherwise, I, I agree with Mr. Shepherd a hundred percent. I think in general, this is a real upgrade with, with what's there. And it is a, a nice attempt to bring it into the twenty-first century. And I, I think that while there may not be any members of the congregation that reside in East Millstone, I'm sure there are a lot of people, a number of people who reside in Franklin. Even so, it's irrelevant, the church is here. That's what we need to be concerned about. It is an inherent benefit. We need to find ways to make it work, in my opinion. Anybody else?
Yeah. I completely agree with Mr. Healy. I think just locking us down on the pervious part may not necessarily help us, because an engineer can come and say that the soil below may not even support that. I think it makes sense that from an engineering perspective, if pervious is the answer, of course, let's go for as much pervious as possible, but if not, let's look at alternatives that definitely reduces the problems that the neighbors are likely to face.
What do you, if you ever wanna put out, put together a motion?
And, and, and speaking on behalf of the applicant, I think I go along with Mr. Healy, we go along with Mr. Healy's suggestion that the engineers go, get together and not lock it into pervious, but come up with some type of solution that works.
Well, the engineers are ultimately the only ones who can do it. We, we can suggest it, and, and we do rely on our staff, make sure that we're protected.
Me. All right. Yeah. I move that we grant Calvary Community Church the variances that they seek, including the D three variance, and approve the site plan with the following additional variances and waivers and conditions. First of all, the, this includes a waiver of the requirements set forth in numbers eleven and twelve of the engineer's report, and that they also are granted setback variances for the sign at the intersection of Amwell Road and Franklin Street, and that the, the space, the church and the other buildings are to be used only for church-related activities, that there'll be no daycare operation run out of the church, except when it is taking place at the time of services, and that the facilities not be rented to anyone who's not a member. And that as far as the, the driveway materials are concerned, the engineer for the church and the township engineer get together to try and identify all possible ways for further reducing the likelihood of excessive runoff, including adding additional pervious paving materials and exploring the idea of an additional drywell at the back of the building to catch the runoff from the addition. That the landscaping include a solid board fence and that where possible, landscaping be included, and that the plan will be submitted to Mark Healy for final approval, at which time he'll contact David Scudder, who I know will be happy to give him his telephone number so that he can look it over with Mr. Healy and make any further suggestions.
You're being put on the spot.
And that's it. That's all I have.
Anything we missed from your notes?
No. And we'll, and whatever it was, we'll, we'll get from the minutes as well, so. We'll all get.
Is there a second?
A second.
Anthony Caldwell?
Four.
Bruce McCracken?
Four.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Four.
Cheryl Bethia?
Four.
Richard Prokanek?
Four.
And Chairman Thomas?
Four.
Okay. Anything we need to know for future, or is there a motion to adjourn? Needing adjourn.